We're going to call this meeting to order. Sorry for the little delay. Uh, Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Mark Gregg.
Here.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolyn.
Yep, here.
Councilmember Henry Rosenthal.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney.
Here.
And Mayor Buddy Pender.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, and, uh, let's see. Tony, can you lead us into pledge? And then, uh, well, Tony's gonna bless us with a prayer for the new year.
All right, what pledge first?
Huh?
What pledge?
Yeah, yeah, let's do pledge first.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
All right, well, I hope we are all looking forward to a great, successful, prosperous 2024 as the council works together and for the good of this community. Heavenly Father, thank you so much. For each person that's here tonight, for each of our council members, for the staff, we pray your blessing over this year and over each of them. We thank you for them. Thank you for the task that they have before them. Give them wisdom, give them understanding, and thank you for the privilege that we have to serve in this country, to live in the freedoms that we have in this country. We ask your blessing now in your precious name. Amen. Amen. Thank you, Tony. Okay, council, uh, any requests for deletions or emergency additions? Mark, Henry? No? Okay, all right.
I do have a question of Maria. She's over there?
Yeah.
Could you just bring me up to date with the fills and the bus stops, where we are?
Well, with regard to the fills, um, a meeting or two ago, the village council, I think it was the last meeting, suggested that, um, uh, we reach out to FDOT and ask about putting boulders, um, along everywhere to keep every, you know, people from parking there. And then that way it would, we'd be able to eliminate the cones and the tape and, um, hopefully some overtime with staff having to make sure that no one's parking there. Um, AJ, I confirmed with him yesterday that he reached out to DOT. He sent an email. And the initial response was no, no way. But then they, uh, the individual that's his contact, um, decided to go ahead and go up the chain. And I think it's some, they, they initially thought we were talking within the clear zone. So, once that was cleared up and they understood, no, it would be back from that area, then they said, well, they needed to go up the chain and, and check. And, uh, AJ has yet to hear back on, on that idea, correct? Oh, sorry.
No worries. So, on, as far as the boulders in the clear zone, um, from what I understand, if they're outside of the clear zone, they don't have any restrictions on that. Um, so we'll have to take a look and see how much the cones are actually within the clear zone and how much we would be able to eliminate by doing that. Um, I, I can take a look at it and, uh, and send you guys an email or something like that with some, some additional information and, and expected costs and stuff like that for the, uh, boulders and kind of a timeframe.
But the DOT is still looking for, but our drawings.
Correct. Yeah, I can give you an update on that as well. I, I've got a confirmation. Um, they were working on that last week. Uh, they should be finishing up the survey this week, so.
But they need to have a new survey. I told everybody that. That came from the DOT. They didn't need a new survey for $30,000.
Okay.
Believe me, it came from them, Ms. Miller. She says she, she would accept the old survey. I told Eka Konis when he signed the, the thing, which is one, a few weeks ago, I told him that. Okay, I'm not going to.
The, yeah, they're, they're working on the drawings. Once they have that information, they'll be able to complete the drawings and, uh, we'll be bringing that back and, um, presenting that to, to DOT to have a, an adjustment in our agreement. And once that's approved, um, then we'll be able to move forward and remove. Correct. Yeah, we haven't stopped one bit. It's, it's just a bit of a process, but we're moving forward with it.
So AJ, we got some dialogue going with them.
I, it's been a constant dialogue, yes.
Maria, if I could call on you one more time, or maybe HA with the other.
Well, with, with regard to the bus stops, um, that was something where we, we engaged McFarland Johnson to start looking at, you know, where we currently have kind of bus stop areas and do an analysis. Um, but then in the meantime, the county hired their own transportation director and, um, that individual's been tasked with establishing, you know, a transit system within the Keys. So, they kind of reached out and when Ed was here, he confirmed that their real hope was that the village would kind of hold off on doing anything because they would like to see a system that is unified throughout the Keys. So, um, you'll recall that Richard Clark came a few meetings ago and made a presentation. And my understanding at that time, my impression, was that council agreed, uh, that we should wait and see what the county's able to get into place. And then we start working with the county to make sure that we have a, uh, you know, a consistent bus stops and, and things like that.
I don't want to labor the subject. I'll just say thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Maria. Thank you, AJ. And, uh, hey, I would like to say we have a new member sitting up here tonight. Before we get rolling here, we have a young lady, Kimberly Matthews is our interim manager that came from the county. So, Kimberly, from all the council, we welcome you.
Thank you. Thank you. And I always, I always love how you call me young lady. I truly, truly appreciate that. Um, so, I just wanted to note, uh, under resolutions, uh, nine C, uh, resolution approving an agreement with Attention Media LLC to provide a social media and outreach program, tab 13. Uh, that is something that, under advice of council previously and discussion previously, we're going to pull that item and we're going to do a month-to-month contract, uh, with Carlos, reporting to the village manager until there is a permanent village manager, and then that will come back before council per the permanent village manager, unless there's an need.
Kimberly, what? That's not nine, is it? Cause that's the, what, is that 13?
It's tab 13.
13.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was, I was using the outline.
Okay, okay.
Versus tabs. Yeah, it's tab 13.
Tab 13. Okay.
Uh, resolutions, item C.
Okay, so we're pulling that.
Yeah, we're gonna pull that.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay, you're welcome.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Um, under tab 11, um, our expert biologist, Daniel Parabok, is only available this evening. So, I would ask that if the council would indulge moving that agenda item if we can't get to it to the end, so that we can get to it this evening. He leaves for vacation tomorrow. So, I want to make sure that if you have questions for him, that you hear it this evening if possible.
Counsel, is, could we move that up then? Could we possibly move it up so we make sure that we have, why we have Daniel here? Uh, let's see, can we do that after the village attorney, village manager communications? Can we move tab 11 to there? Is that okay?
That would be fine.
Are we all good?
Yes.
Okay, so I will do that.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Jennifer. Okay, so we're gonna put tab 11 here. Yep, I don't know about that boy, man. He's going, I heard he just caught a big wahoo over 40 pounds, man. Anyways, okay. So, let's move on here. So, if there's no more deletions or additions, uh, presentate, okay, Ms. Young, are we waiting on, that's the next thing, the presentation by Ms. Elizabeth Young, but?
It's my understanding she will not be. Apologies. It's my understanding she won't be here until approximately 6:30.
Okay.
So, once she arrives, we'll let you know.
Okay, all right. Okay, so with that being said, we are now at the point of, uh, general public comment. Marnie, do we have anybody signed up for general public comment?
Uh, yes, Van Cadenhead.
Good evening, council. Uh, we just came from your, uh, special meeting over there in the admin building about Mr. Galizio. And, uh, I would reiterate that we need Mr. Galizio. I don't know what you decided. We'll find out when we get to read the transcript of your meeting. But, uh, our planning department is, is, uh, in limbo and we need a development head. And Mr. Galizio worked for us for 18 months and did an outstanding job. He was professional and he knew what the problem was and he was fixing the problem. And we have a long way to go to complete fixing that problem. So, I hope that, uh, everybody's happy with what comes out of your, uh, meeting. But, uh, I hope above all that Mr. Galizio is happy because great damage was done to his reputation by the way he was handled, or should I say mishandled, by this council. So, uh, I appreciate, uh, the time that you just put into your last meeting. And I look forward to, uh, a happy outcome for Mr. Galizio. And also, I, I hope that, uh, he would in some way or shape be, uh, helping us to complete our strategic plan and our, our rehab, uh, redoing of our code and LDRs. Because he's, he knows how to do it. He was in the process of doing it and he was stopped, uh, midway in that process. So, um, I, I hope we can get him back, uh, to finish us up. Uh, from Key West, he was immediately snapped up by Key West to be one of their senior planners. So, uh, that's my only comment on, on your meeting. And, uh, I just, uh, would thank you for your time and for your, uh, your effort on the behalf of the people of Alamo Rada. Thank you very much.
Good man. Marnie, any other public comment?
No one else has signed up.
Okay. With that being said, public comment is now closed. Uh, we're gonna move on to, uh, mayor council communications. So, Councilman Jolyn, do you wanna, uh, go ahead and discuss this, or do we wanna wait for Ms. Young to get here? Okay. All right. So, Bee, the next one is, uh, the vice mayor.
Um, I had, uh, talked to Kimberly this week about something I would like to, for us to talk about and maybe consider doing is, um, Island Christian Church is up for sale. And we need a really good library in Alamo Rada and we don't have one. I was thinking, and it's just a thought, if we could look into maybe purchasing Island Christian Church, taking it down. Sorry, it's been there a long time. I used to go to the movies there for 25 cents. And, uh, building a really state-of-the-art library that the community would have input in. And taking the library, and I haven't even talked to Terry about this, this is gonna come out of my mouth now, is that maybe the fire department could utilize the old library. And so, it might benefit two great needs that we have in this community. So, I know I talked to Kimberly about it. I don't know how the rest of the council feels about looking into, uh, maybe Monroe County partnering with us and paying for part of it. So, that's my thought.
Well, vice mayor, how about if we do this? We, we now have, uh, Kimberly here, so we could, uh, reach out to Mr. Gustizi, the county administrator, and see if they have an interest. So, can we ask, or depending on what council would like to do, we could, uh, ask staff to give us a little direction on that.
Well, I'm for it. I don't know how the other council feels about my thoughts. I think, you know, not only did I come up with the boulders, but this is also a good one.
Okay. You have something, Elizabeth? You'd like to comment about that?
Yeah, um, another great idea. Um, and, um, I know that this, that Kimberly has the expertise to, to think about things strategically. Um, are we asking to, um, are we giving direction to look at the purchase of that property, no matter, you know, whether, no matter what happens there? I mean, what, one of my concerns about that particular property is that, um, it is an entrance to our community and there is an opportu, I mean, it, it could be, um, it could be a CBS, another CBS, or a Circle K, or, uh, you know, a Shell gas station, and that kind of concerns me. I think that, um, it'll be worth considering, looking at, giving some direction for negotiating the potential for a purchase for something. And, you know, if it happens to be a library, that's amazing. I know that takes quite a bit of, um, planning, but I, I would be, um, happy to give that direction.
Well, when Kimberly and I talk, the layout of where it's at is perfect. It really is. And also, the, if you look at the shape of the movie theater, whatever, in the front, we could build a really nice state-of-the-art library that the community could have input to. And then down the side, we could have rooms that could be utilized for a community center, which can, uh, help a lot of people when they have meetings, whether we have classes in there, whether you use them for whatever. We'd have after-school reading. We'd have the ability to also have a community center where people could hold their meetings. Cause I know that's a lot of problem for a lot of people. So, I was looking at both.
Henry, you wanna comment on that?
Really?
Okay.
I, I think it's a project for the county.
Okay. Okay, well, you, okay. Mark?
We, we have a unique opportunity with Kimberly here and she can guide us through this. I think it's worthy of exploration. Let's see where it goes. Worst thing that can happen is we decide no. There's no risk, but why not?
Well, you know, uh, I think Kimberly has a little advantage there because she's over the libraries for, uh, Monroe County. And before that, it was Dade County, right? Okay, so, I think there's a very beautiful library now in Marathon. Can you tell us about that?
Well, I like to think so. Um, and I would encourage anyone who hasn't seen the Marathon Library to definitely stop by if you're running through Marathon. Uh, we did a lot of work. It's a beautiful facility. Uh, I think that there's always room for improvement and I think we could do something even more spectacular. And I would never, ever presume to speak for Roman, but I know Roman is always open to the conversation. And so, I would say that if the village is interested in having, so putting my village hat back on, if the village is interested in having that conversation with county, I'm sure Roman would welcome having the conversation. The answer may or may not be yes. It may be pieces and parts. So, I think, I think starting that conversation is always good.
Okay.
Absolutely.
All right, well, I think we're, uh, vice mayor, I think we're, we're good.
Can I ask for one clarification, just in terms of what the direction is? I understand, obviously, there's direction to talk to the county about their amendment ability to potentially incorporating this into the library system. Um, but do you also want, um, staff to communicate with the owners of the property to, uh, determine potential cost, whether, just wanted to make sure that was clear in terms of the direction, not, that wasn't just the county, but also with the, uh, property owners. Thank you.
Okay, yeah. So, hey, Sharon, you mentioned 25 cents, but do you remember, most of us went barefooted and the, and the, and the raccoons would even come in and get popcorn too, man. So, Ziggy used to feed the, the raccoons, you know, pretty well. They're.
We're dating ourselves.
Yeah. So, anyways, there's some stories from a long time ago.
Public comment?
Uh, no, Van, we're under, John, we're under, uh, there's no public comment under mayor council.
This is discussion items, obviously, if there's any purchase or any, I think, any approval, that would come back before council and public comment would be required then.
Okay. All right, uh, Councilman Gray.
So, I have an item on here, if you haven't seen this in the agenda. I'm asking the council to consider, and the village to consider, uh, having a flag design contest, a village flag. So, I, I hear some laughter and, and I think that that's warranted. You might ask yourself, as I did, you know, why do we need a flag? You know, don't we have better things to do with our time? Don't we have more important issues to focus our resources on? And, and I think that the answer to that is yes. But I also think that, you know, in a way, a flag can help us resolve those better and in a more effective way. And the way, the reason I say that is, you know, I did a little study on this and I've come to learn that a flag is a very important symbol for a group, and in this case, our village. And it represents who we are and what we stand for, what we value, what we hold dear, and what we're all about. And we, represents that to each other as well as to the world. And the way that I kind of started thinking about it, it got my attention on it, was about four years ago, when we had a presidential election. And you may recall, if you lived here or were here, it was very difficult to move around and, not only in the village, but, uh, in, in the Keys and maybe all of Florida, without seeing a flag of some case in, in the political race. And, and I saw them on the sandbar. I saw them on my boat going in and out of Tavernier Creek and Snake Creek. You saw them on the back of pickup trucks. You saw them in people's yards. And the reality is that people like flags because you might not think that you do, but you really do, because it's a unifying symbol. That humans are social animals and they like to belong to a group and they like to have something that they can identify with that says who they are and, and what they're about. And it's no secret that we've had a, a bumpy time the last year in this council being unified and working together. And so, it occurred to me that maybe having a flag would bring us together, whether we, our ideas about how to run the government might not be all in sync. But, uh, I think everyone here loves where we live and we do what we do because we want this to be the best place to live that we possibly can make it. And we might differ on how to get there, but no one doubts the goal and the cause. And what better, uh, thing to have as a symbol of that goal and that cause than a flag? So, many places have them, many cities have them. I don't know of another city that, I don't know if Key West has one. They have the Conch Republic flag, which you know is very popular. The county has a flag, which is not very nice, but it's okay. Um, but the, the, the flag is, is an expression, it's, it's a, it's an expression of who we are and it speaks through the language of design. And it has to do with colors and shapes and symbols. And, uh, I, I came to learn that, um, flags, uh, the people that study, it's a big deal. There's a whole world of flagged people out there. So, if you like flags and you study them, you're, you're called a vexilologist. I, I'm not sure if I said that right, because the study of flags is vexilology. And believe it or not, there's the North American Vexilological Association. And you've probably heard enough about that, but they have, uh, assist, a, 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 a set of rules or a set of design guidelines to follow when you're gonna design a flag. And you're gonna see some of that a little later on in a video. And so, uh, what I would like us to do is to consider something that might be fun. I'd like it to be a contest. I, I'd like to have prizes, financial prizes, $1,000 for the winner, uh, 500 for second place, and 250, uh, for third. If the council doesn't want to pay for it, I will volunteer my council salary to cover that, uh, cause I believe in it and I think it's, it's that good of a thing for us to, to bring us together. So, um, I was, I'm gonna, when we finish this presentation, I'm gonna ask the sta, the council if they have, have an appetite for this. And if so, could we give direction to the staff in particular, Kimberly, uh, as the manager, to come up with the rules and regulations and procedure for a flag contest? Uh, we spoke about that together today in our staff meeting, in our council meeting, or, um, excuse me, uh, agenda meeting. And, uh, I come to find out very happily that Kimberly's already engaged in a contest on behalf of the library to design a logo. So, logos and flags are pretty close. She's already got that under her belt. I don't think it's gonna be a, a difficult task for her to, uh, just transition over to that. So, in your packets, I don't know if the, uh, audience has it, here's, here's the pamphlet from the National Vexilological Association with the guidelines of good flag and bad flag. There's a lot to it. But, uh, to give you more insight and a, and a keener sense of what it would be like to do this, uh, I have a, a TED Talk video I'm gonna ask Vince to tee up, if you're there, Vince. And, uh, it's presented by, um, a, uh, I guess he's a, a video journalist or something. His name is Roman Mars. He does a radio, uh, broad podcast and he's all about design. And he's gonna tell you about flags. So, I'm gonna stop talking and let.
Mark, can you let, Henry would like to speak.
Oh, excuse me, sorry.
It's okay. I can endorse what you wanna do. We have a committee designed already. And that's a committee in, in the high school. We have 10 members of the high school, 10 members of the high school. Thank you for doing that. And that would be a project for them to participate in. So, it's, that's my feeling. So.
Are you saying that the junior council?
Yes.
The student council body?
Yeah.
Okay.
For the village, right?
Yeah, but there's a committee that, for that, at the high school.
Okay.
So, to me, to shuffle it off to them and see what they can do about it. So, that's just my recommendation, for what it's worth. Thank you.
Thanks, Henry.
Well, I'd like it to be open to everyone, especially and including, uh, the council. But, um, I, I don't wanna say too much more because I'm at the limit of my competence in talking about it. But I think this little video that you'll, if you'll play this, you'll, some of its humorous, there is one bad word in there. So, if there's children watching, just cover your ears. So, I hope you enjoyed that. I hope you got something from it. And I hope that you learned a little bit about how a flag can help us be a better village. So, thank you for indulging that 18-minute-long TED Talk. But I figured I had a little license since we, uh, eliminated that item for, uh, Carlos early. So, um, I just thought I would put that out there, see if there's interest on the council to have a flag contest. Do you like it? Do you not like it? Is it a waste of time? You won't offend me if the answer's yes, but I think we saw a, a good case to be made for how that can bring us together and build civic pride, village pride. I, I'd be really proud to, to stand under a banner like that. It would be pretty cool. And I'd like to see it come from somebody that, that feels that, somebody here. So, what do you say?
Okay, yeah, I'm in. Great. I'd like to see more TED Talks on the village council, um, meetings as well. But in the meantime, fabulous, so exciting. And I hope we can, um, get, move that along.
Thank you for your enthusiasm. Vice Mayor, good? Henry, you already said you.
I'm good.
You're good. Right. Well, Kimberly, is, any, any other questions? You got good walking papers there?
Excellent. So, we have our guidance from council that you're all in favor of the idea of a flag. So, what we'll do as staff is we will go forward. We will put together, uh, our idea of how we could do the process. Would you like it to, us to bring it back to you to approve the process and then move forward with that?
Yeah.
I think we should take a look at it, sure.
Okay, sounds great. We'll put together a process and we'll bring it back to you.
John?
I was just saying, we could bring it back in the form of resolution, um, so that it's, it's all voted on and approved, um, by council.
Thank you to the staff and council for enduring that and indulging me, and to the audience for sitting through that. I hope it will be something that you will take part in and be proud of.
We'll have more. That's it?
I'm, I'm out of TED Talks for tonight, but I'll work on it for the next meeting.
All right. So, with that being said, Mark, we're gonna move on to village attorney and village manager communications.
Excuse me, um, Mayor, um, you know, that was a lovely nod to arts and culture. And actually, I think that Elizabeth Young is in the, is in the audience. No, she's not here yet? Okay, sorry, I thought.
Yeah, no, I didn't think.
So, sorry, so sorry.
I know Beth, so.
Okay.
All right. So, we're gonna move on to A, then, uh, Jennifer, tab one.
Thank you. Um, as you may recall, on November 9th, the council passed ordinance 23-11, which amended the multifamily zoning district to allow single-family development. Um, after that, the planning department rendered the proposed ordinance to the Department of Commerce for review. to the Department of Commerce for review. And on Monday, December eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three, I received a call from the Department of Commerce and spoke with James Stansberry and Jana Williams at the Department of Commerce. They have some concerns regarding the proposed amendment, that it's inconsistent with our village comprehensive plan, specifically policy dash one dash two point three point four, and village code section thirty dash six eighty-nine, A one. During this conversation, Mr. Stansberry suggested that the village could withdraw the ordinance and possibly amend the comp plan, um, as well, or the village could allow the department's review to continue with the possibility that they could challenge the proposed amendment. Their decision is due to, back to us, January fourteenth. They were looking for a decision prior to Christmas. I unfortunately wasn't able to make that decision on my own, so I had to bring it back before this council for guidance. Uh, I made them aware of that, and so they know that it's on this agenda tonight for discussion and guidance from you on how to proceed. So I'm just looking at this time for guidance, if the council would like me to let the Department of Commerce know that we will be withdrawing that, and looking to amend our comp plan, or look at other things related to this ordinance, or if you would like to proceed with the Department of Commerce's review and wait to see what their result is.
Okay, John?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, and then procedurally, so you're aware, if, if the council, um, wants to withdraw it, it would be done through, uh, an ordinance, formally rescinding the other ordinance, since it was passed by ordinance, we can only rescind it by ordinance. If the council wants to, um, uh, defend it, then you would go, you, the, we would have to go through the administrative process of, of defending the, uh, uh, the ordinance and the provision, um, that it is not inconsistent with, uh, with whatever identified provisions in the comp plan. They've identified one, as well as a code section, they believe, um, and we would have to defend it based upon that. So, um, we can do that either way, like, like Jennifer said, you can, we can, um, if the council still wants to pursue this, we could also still rescind it, or rescind it through an ordinance, and then, uh, address the issues that the Department of Commerce feels exist, uh, through a comp plan change or, or another code change as well.
Okay. Kimberly, you have anything you wanna say?
I would say it's up to the will of council, um, whether you'd like to move forward with this based on legal guidance, um, also what Jennifer has shared with you, you know, um, if it's inconsistent with our comprehensive plan, maybe it would be prudent to do those things jointly. But again, I'm sure you've all reviewed that, and it predates my time here. And so I know you've received guidance from Jennifer before. I, I trust you'll make a good choice.
All right, thank you. Hey, John, and we can't, this has been pushed off long enough, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I think the decision, we need to make a decision, 'cause effectively, if, uh, if, if there's no guidance given, the Department of Commerce has a deadline that they need to do something, so that would mean they would start the process of, uh, uh, challenging, formally challenging this through the administrative process. So it would effectively be, we'd be, have, the decision would be, we'd be defending it. So, um, uh, you know, the, it, it's really the, uh, decision of the council. I mean, we, uh, staff, we felt, um, you know, it was consistent, and, you know, we've had some conversations with the Department of Commerce, but, um, you know, listen, they're the, the state oversight agency, and, and, you know, dude, is this something that the, the council wants to go to the mattresses for? Or is it something that the council says, you know what? We, doesn't matter that much to us, we can rescind it, or it matters, but let's rescind it, and let's address the issues that the Department of Commerce has, has raised, uh, before we move forward with.
Okay. Counsel?
I have a question. John, it, I mean, I think the council was unanimous in passing that ordinance, so the goals that it's trying to achieve, you know, are still in place, we, we still wanna do that. But it sounds like the fix is to, uh, pass a companion comp plan amendment that would address those, uh, concerns. But otherwise, the ordinance is fine, uh, as it is, assuming that we can fix it. Is there any negative, uh, serious negative consequences of us just leaving it in place? They may challenge it, and I know that, that takes a long time. But, you know, if we pull it out, and we withdraw that, and then we, you know, start the process over again, then we're gonna have to go through the process of redoing it all. I, I don't see the harm in leaving it in place while we start tomorrow, or whenever Jennifer has time, uh, to, to begin working on the comp plan fix for that, and communicate to them that we recognize their position, and we're gonna address that. But do we have to break something that is already in, you know, withdraw something that's already been done?
Yeah, it's, uh, so I'm, I, I'm not aware of the, so I think that the, my approach is similar to yours, is I would, uh, um, like for the Department of Commerce to tell us, you know, listen, you can keep it in place, and you can go do the comp plan amendment, and we won't do anything, um, while you're going through that process. I'm not sure that they're, uh, they're at that point, but that's a, uh, you know, something that, uh, I would like to get commitment from them. If we have commitment to say, yes, we are going to make the, the comp plan change, can we just leave this in place so that we don't have to just do it all over? You know, go through the steps of rescinding, and then go through the steps of passing it all over again.
Waste of energy to do things twice just to-
Exactly, it does. And if they're willing to, um, to say, yes, we can live with that, I think that that's the best solution for everybody. If they're not, then the downside is, if we leave it in place, then we have to defend it, and there's obviously expenditures that, that come with that in terms of-
Or withdraw it.
Or withdraw it. So, uh, and, and again, we just have to go through the, the hoops. But, um, uh, you know, ideally, uh, you know, they, they haven't, um, at least not that I'm aware, they haven't shared with us that they're willing to say, we can keep it on the books and just wait for you to, to do the fix. Uh, if they're willing to do that, I think that's the best solution for everybody, frankly.
Can I just ask, is that, I mean, if that's a standard procedure for that department, then why would they ask us to rescind it?
Well, I wouldn't say that that's necessarily standard, that's not necessarily standard for us to keep something on the books that they're, they are challenging while we make the, uh, the comp plan, uh, update. Doesn't mean they won't agree to it, but I wouldn't say that that's a standard. If that was a standard procedure, I would say, listen, we can leave it on, and we can move forward, and we'll just make the comp plan change. But, um, i- it's not something that automatically happens, but it's also not something that automatically can't happen. We just have to get their agreement on it.
Does it ever happen? I mean, you're familiar with-
Yeah, um, I'm trying to think if there's a time that that's happened. I can't think of one off the top of my head that it has, but it doesn't mean we can't ask them and that they wouldn't agree to it. Because I think that the Department of Commerce also understands that, listen, if you're willing to make the comp plan change, that, that's really what the issue is, that they, um, they feel it's not consistent with this, this one policy. If you're willing to make a, a change, a tweak to that language, um, then they would be okay with it. Are they gonna really make us go through all of the administrative hurdles, which creates more work for us, but also creates more work for them, that they have to review it a second time?
So are you suggesting that we table this until you, you, you and Jennifer get more information for us to make a more informed decision?
No, I'm saying that, that we don't have that information from the Department of Commerce, but I'm saying that I think we need to get, um, a, uh, cons, I mean, we need to get an understanding from the council, is this something that you would like to keep on the books and make a change for? Um, and if so, we can explore that possibility. Uh, but if the council is not, um, uh, i- if this, if this is something the council doesn't really care about, and they say, let, you all say, let's just rescind it, um, you know, for us to continue pushing the department to, uh, for, for an agreement on that, uh, I guess we, wouldn't, really wouldn't be necessary if the, so we need to understand, is the council, is this something the council would like to keep? Uh, as, as Councilman Greg pointed out, I believe it was passed unanimously. Um, but we need to get, uh, understanding from the council, uh, as to where it is.
I think we should personally keep it and just move forward, see what they-
We can commit to them that we're gonna fix the problem that they've identified, just don't make us do the work over again. I mean, I mean, if we, if we had a challenge, couldn't we enter to a settlement agreement to do the same thing?
Potentially, yes.
Yeah. So, why, why do we have to do a do-over? That just seems wasteful.
Yep. I, I agree with you, and that's obviously the, uh, you know, discussions that we, we have, and, and, um, to, to try to convince them to, to allow that, so.
So are you gonna be bringing back the answer, and then we'll have, then we'll make another decision about this? Because, because, that's the question.
Okay. Well, I think if the council says, listen, we'd like to keep it and make the comp plan change, the answer is, we'll go to the Department of Commerce, and we will push them a little more, and say, listen, this is what our marching orders are, they'd like to do it, and we'd like to make the fix. Um, and if they say, fine, we'll hold off, no problem. What we would do is, we would bring the ordinance change for the comp plan, uh, the ordinance for the comp plan change back before you all, and, and that process would get going.
Okay. Counsel, are we all in agreement, or?
No, I agree with Mark. That's all right.
Okay. So, okay, so, Henry, are you on board?
I would withdraw it, but whatever, whatever's of your pleasure.
Okay.
And, and then if the, um, if the Department of Commerce then says, no, we won't, you know, we're not willing to do that, we've conferred, you know, further with our council, and we're not willing to do that, um, then can I assume, or I don't wanna assume, but can, based upon this discussion with the council, like us to then withdraw it, and then, and then start back the process with the comp plan change? And then the companion, um, bring back the ord, the code change again, um, once the comp plan change has been made?
So you're, you're asking two questions, right? So if, you're saying, if, if you go have a conversation, they say, no, we're not gonna do that, now you want us to answer a different question, and that is, then what do you want us to do?
Well, my, the, the step to keep it would be, we bring by an ordinance that rescinds it, and then we start the process all over again. That would be the step to keep it. If they say, no, we're not willing to, um, you know, go the easier administrative route.
Okay, so I think what we're doing, we wanna see what they come back with. They, what they, so, we, we need to stay the course. I think that's what the consensus just said.
So, if I may, and please correct me if I'm incorrect on this. My understanding is they're set to go to an appeal on the fourteenth, so-
Well, they haven't committed to appealing it.
They have committed?
They have not committed.
They have not, oh, okay.
They said they were leaning towards appealing it, but they would not give me a firm committal that they would appeal it, one way or the other.
Okay. So essentially, I believe we're seeking guidance from the council that if, as Jennifer and John have a conversation with them, if their guidance to us is, no, we have no inclination to hold off, we're not going to hold the item while you wait, uh, while you, uh, address the comp plan issue, then our question to you is, would you like us to pull it back, reintroduce it with the entire process intact and in place as DEO has intended or would like us, would like to see it? Or if they say, sure, we'll hold off, do your comp plan adjustment, and, you know, we'll wait to see-
They'll review it, yeah.
And so, are you comfortable with those two options? Because we don't know between now and the next meeting if we'll get a yes or a no, and we might need to kinda be on the fly, so.
Okay.
I'm okay with that. I, I'd just like for, whenever you communicate to the Department of Commerce, to emphasize that we will also agree to take no action under that ordinance that we couldn't take, uh, before, I mean, just, just as if it weren't in effect.
Yeah, and, and they haven't approved it yet, so, um, it wouldn't, it's not effective until the Department of Commerce approves it anyway.
Couldn't we just stipulate with them that the deadline on filing the appeal is, uh, you know, after we get the comp plan?
I asked that question, they cannot grant us an extension.
Okay. Government, so much fun. Okay.
Public comment?
John?
This is a discussion item, but obviously, any ordinances that be brought, are brought back will be heard, have two readings and, and public comment on them.
Okay. All right, so, uh, before we move ahead, Elizabeth, I, I think I just saw Ms. Young come in. So, uh, Ms. Young, can you please come to the podium, please? Welcome?
Thank you. Good evening, nice to see all of you tonight. Thank you for waiting for us on our venture back down the Keys. Elizabeth Young, I am the Executive Director of the Arts Council. I'm a thirty-six-year resident of the Florida Keys. I hail from Chicago and New York City. But I am, uh, very pleased to be here tonight to speak to you on, uh, I think probably what everybody already knows, which is that art and culture, uh, help to create a really vibrant place to live and work and be. And I was asked, um, by some of your fellow residents of Isla Marada to come to you tonight and, and speak to you about some of the things the Arts Council has been doing for twenty-five-plus years in, in the county. And, um, I'm here to answer any questions or concerns that I, I might be able to. I know that you're considering, um, to have somebody as part of your staff, uh, administrate arts and culture, and I would say that I'm a huge proponent of that. I would advocate for that for your community. You have so many things going on, and I think having someone, uh, who is particularly assigned, uh, an opportunity to bring more art and culture to your community, and the awareness of it, and collaborate, and use all of your beautiful venues would be a real asset to your, um, village. In addition to what the Arts Council is, is already doing for the county.
Liz, could you, um, speak to the economic benefits of, of creating, um, uh, arts and cultural awareness in the community?
Absolutely. So we are, um, affiliated with the National Endowment of the Arts. So the NEA works with an organization called Americans for the Arts. We are members of AFTA, we work directly with them, and we did a survey of Monroe County, which is called the Economic and Arts Prosperity. It's done all around the United States, and you can look at how many jobs and how many dollars are brought into a community. Uh, in twenty-seventeen, our report showed that the arts and culture in Monroe County was over eighty-six million dollars, and we had over a thousand jobs. And I know that's spread out throughout the Keys, you know, specifically in Isla Marada. What we're talking about, when you look at the dollar, that every dollar spent in an arts venture creates seven dollars. I think it's up to nine dollars in some communities now. Because if you think about if someone is, uh, attending a music event, attending a gallery opening, you know, perhaps they're also going to a restaurant, they're parking their car, they're paying a babysitter, they are creating more and more dollars. Um, we just witnessed that now, we were just at Kona Kai, a, a very small venue for us, uh, made it open to the public, 'cause that's something we're trying to talk about, art builds community. And we had almost a hundred and fifty people stop in, in a ninety-minute, uh, venture. And we created dollars for the Arts Council. Uh, as an Arts Council, my job is all the arts, all the Keys, all the time. So we're particularly focused on performing arts, visual arts, uh, literary arts, and the historic arts. And I know that history is incredibly valuable in your community. My colleague, Sue D'Antonio, Sue represents, um, Commissioner David Rice, I mean, sorry, Beth Camenstein represents David Rice, and, uh, Sue is here from Big Pine. She represents Commissioner Michelle Lincoln. And we do, through the Public Art Program, you know, we survey the community. We do a lot of community outreach. And as I mentioned to, um, some of the people on your council, I was part of a three-hundred-thousand-dollar R-Town grant for the city of Key West, for the Truman Waterfront Park. And we have a master arts plan for the Truman Waterfront Park that I think would be very valuable to hand over to someone to use here in the village, because the goals are there, we've talked about the history, we were talking about the maritime history. But, um, Sue and I stopped at the library today, you know, I mean, you have such a rich history that could be shared with not only the residents, but the visitors. And I think, uh, what we're really seeing throughout the state of Florida and all over the country, um, people really want an authentic experience. They wanna gather, they wanna be together, they wanna be outside, they're coming to paradise. And, you know, sometimes people work their whole life to come and visit here or be here. I think we're pretty fortunate. And I, I do see, in my thirty-plus years, you know, we have really grown our artistic community. People love to live here and create art, whether it's music, writing a book, a poem, performing. It's all happening. And I think having someone who can advocate for the arts and coordinate for you, and build, build programming would be very valuable economically, culturally. It creates more fabric of, of, you know, the life that we're living here. A little harmony, can I throw in harmony? And there's, you know, tons of statistics, tons of goals, tons of strategic planning, tons of planning that can go into it. But I do think that we all, uh, wanna support people who wanna live a creative life. And I think that the, the Keys really do foster that.
Counsel, any questions? Michelle?
Michelle? No, but my question is, this is your item, Elizabeth, so what would you like for us to consider? What do you ask?
Right, right, thank you. And I appreciate your time in stopping in, and while you're here, we may have further questions, but, you know, we have been talking about this sort of, this discussion of arts and culture has risen to the surface, starting from when we were discussing our budget like 100 years ago. And what I'm really requesting is that we task our manager with creating some sort of a job description for us to review that would be detailed, that would include deliverables, outline deliverables, to, that would include coordinating with a citizen committee to look at how we can elevate arts and culture in our community. I'm, we've discussed a paid position, and when I think about the economic numbers that you referred to, which we did discuss a little bit more in detail on the phone, there is an economic component that I think is valuable. And I think this conversation is quite timely to begin exploration, just considering the changing demographics of our community. So, you know, I'm not asking you to sign on to anything and get out your wallets, but I wonder if we could begin the conversation and give some direction to our staff to bring back a very clear picture of what someone in this position might do for our community.
I think that's a great idea. I mean, we're, we've evolved enough and we're mature enough to where art is a very important part of our lifestyles, and as a community, we can elevate that more, and it takes somebody devoted to that position to do that for us. So I like your suggestion, I like, I can't advocate for a flag without advocating for art, they're the same thing, come on. So, I'm being a little silly, but I'm also serious that I like that. And I, I mean, if somebody has a better idea, I don't think it's a question, should we do it? Yes, we should, but how to do it, and I don't know how to do it, but certainly wouldn't mind asking, dumping this onto our new manager on her second day on the job to help us through this, but certainly, I don't mean dumping, but working with Elizabeth and her group, who's obviously advanced, more advanced than us on that, I think it's a way for us to distinguish ourselves, and she said, she used the word harmony, I like the word unity as well. So, why can't we do it? Tell me why we can't, I should. Henry, you have your, say anything?
I shouldn't, I'll leave it alone.
You are?
Yes.
Why? I mean, come on, give us your opinion.
I think it's a great idea, support you 100%.
Thank you.
Majority of my phone calls are in reference to those three creatures, and I don't even know what I'm talking about.
Of course.
Yes. I'd like to know if you have any plans for those in the future.
Can we actually just hold off on that? Because, and I so respect the question, but I would just say that it's a bigger conversation right now, and that can kind of devolve into some, you know, negativity, and what we're really talking about is a broader conversation about art and the many, the many avenues and venues that that encompasses. And I just respectfully ask for the...
I understand that. I was asked a question, I answered it. For the people and the phone calls that I get, simple.
Okay, so Vice Mayor, go ahead, I know you...
I love art and culture. I own a business that is artistic, and over the 20-some odd years I've owned my shop, I have made things that I think are spectacular, and people come in and go, oh, it's okay. And then I've made things that I'm thinking, she really wants this in her bouquet, and they come in and they start crying. So art is extremely subjective. What you see I might not like, and what I see you might not like, I think it's important, I don't see where we need to make this a paid position, I'm sorry, I don't. I think it should be a committee of people. So, and when they apply, you pick someone from different parts who have, like, a resume of what they're in, and so we can cover a broader base of, maybe you're good at music, maybe she likes sculpting or something, and I think it should be more than just one person I just do, I think it needs to be a committee.
May I address that? Because that is a really common question we get all the time, and I have spent a long time, you know, administering. I am not a creative person at all. My job is to wrangle the creative people. I have a committee of seven in the city of Key West that are appointed by the mayor and city commissioners. I have a committee of five appointed by the county commissioners, and then we always have stakeholders. So for instance, if you were doing a public art project in a firehouse, you know, perhaps you'd have a fire chief or somebody who lives across the street, like we do in the county, that is a very common understanding, and I think when Ms. Jolynn and I spoke about it, and Kimberly and I have worked about, with the Marathon Library, where we had, you know, 25 proposals for a public art project, all at the same budget, all in the same foyer, all, you know, again, we say art starts a conversation, and that's what it's going to do. And we try to take the, my job is to bring the village council, the county commission, the city commission, a recommendation from a beautiful committee that has battled it out. I would never ask you, as a council, ever, to say, I think that's what we should have, because you're going to say it should be more blue, it should be bigger, it should be smaller, I want a fish, I want a white picket fence, I don't want your beautiful Renaissance sculptures made out of coral in the middle of the highway. I get it, I get it. We've heard it all, I've heard it all, I promise you. You need someone who can cut through all of that conversation and understands how to advocate for art and culture, and say, hey, we're going to have James Taylor, and this is what it's going to take to get James Taylor at the, you know, he's already coming to Ocean Reef, we'd really love him at the bandstand, what is it going to take? Can the high school band, you know, be the warm-up band? Do we have a comedian? Can we sell art? You have an incredible Chamber of Commerce president, I've worked with Judy for years. I will say that the, as a local arts agency designated by the county, as the designated local arts agency, we're supposed to explain ourselves, like a local arts agency anywhere else in the United States, as a Chamber of Commerce for the arts. I don't do that, because some of the chambers in the Keys aren't really popular, and I don't want to be compared to them. I make a decision that the Arts Council is here to support artists and the arts community. We work with all of the elected officials up and down the Keys, we work with the Tourist Development Council, you know, my job is to promote the destination for its rich arts and culture. It's not for one artist, one theater, one museum over any of them. So I get to be the cultural umbrella, you know, and kind of be the good guy for all of it, and you will probably have an advisory committee, but I would recommend that you need to have a staff member, someone who is reporting back to you as a council to say, we vetted this, we got community input, we asked everybody on the block. You know, you have to have someone who takes that job responsibly, in my opinion.
Well, you sort of answered what I didn't hear the first time, so I do, I apologize. I thought it was just one person who was going to make all the decisions, when now the word committees has left your lips. I appreciate it greatly, and I agree that, again, it's something that we should have more of down here.
Yeah, you don't, you, I would recommend, and I would say that most municipalities, big or small, would rarely put it on one person. I mean, even when you're in, when we go to, you know, an airport or one of the big universities, and somebody says, oh, I'm an alum, I'd like to leave you my Picasso, well, there's a committee that decides if that Picasso is coming to a college campus. I don't care where you are, because it takes maintenance, it takes work. We have what we call here, you know, sea salt and wind, there's, you have to have a professional who understands what it is the community wants, what the community will embrace, harmony, unity, you know, what is going to make this community thrive. We're seeing in Key West, one of the things that we learned from the Truman Waterfront Park, I mean, it took 17 years to get grass there, 17 years, which, you know, is crazy-making if you live there, but now the park is so gorgeous, nobody remembers that it took 15 years. They love the park, we put two big sculptures there. Somebody once said to me, I can't remember the park without the sculpture. I said, okay, that means we did a good job. Right?
Great explanation, thank you so very much.
You're welcome, you're welcome.
I think what the Vice Mayor was talking about was just diversity, that with other, with multiple people comes diversity.
Of course.
And every person sees through a different eye lens, so, and there does need to be some history about the areas in the Keys, which you guys have done, because I think we work with you with leadership.
Yes.
I believe, when I was in Key West for leadership, so, yeah, a lot of art in Key West.
We're very blessed. You know, it's interesting, just as an aside, the Literary Seminar is celebrating its 42nd season, and I was talking to the founder's widow, you know, and they were like, we're going to have some writers come to the Keys, you know, and now every January, you know, they have such a diverse group of people who want to come in January to the sunshine to talk about literature, and they've got such a diverse group now. And I said to somebody, maybe it was you, Elizabeth, that, you know, wouldn't it be wonderful if, after there were things going on in Key West in January, that some of these writers came here, used your beautiful facility, you know, did a couple seminars, workshops? I mean, there's so many ways to collaborate. I know you do that often with the concerts, the impromptu concerts, and then that talent, you know, comes here and performs as part of the band concerts here. I mean, there's a wonderful way to have someone coordinate and collaborate with you.
And I liked that you said you worked with Judy with the chamber, so that's a good thing.
Absolutely.
I'm a little prejudiced, because I think we do have a great chamber...
You do.
...in Isla Marada.
You do.
All right, Counsel, Kimberly some direction?
Can we give some direction there?
How do you go about finding the person? What are we looking for? Would you know that? And she could maybe, the two of you know?
Well, I think the best first course of action would be, as Councilwoman Jolynn recommended, would be for us to put together a job description. I would most definitely work with Liz.
Pleasure.
And we would put something together, bring it back to you, see if that suited what you were looking for. If it does, then we can move forward from there.
Are we all in agreement? We okay? Everybody good?
Thank you for your time.
Henry, you're good? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, I appreciate you waiting for me. Okay, good, have a good evening, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now we're going to go back to, I think we're on B now, right? Tab two?
Yes, that's correct.
Maria?
As everyone is aware, we started a new contract, a new service provider for solid waste recycling and yard waste pickup with Island Disposal, effective January 1 of 2024. And in working with Island Disposal and making, they reached out to commercial customers and started giving them proposals for service, they realized that there was one error on one of the rate sheets, on one of the rates. So I included that information in your agenda package, but basically, it's a rate for garbage compactor, compacted yardage, that's on the pricing sheet. It's Exhibit B in the contract, and the rate currently showing is $49 per cubic yard. And Island Disposal requested that the rate be corrected to $121.77 per cubic yard, and that's a monthly rate. That rate actually makes them consistent with the other proposals that were received, the one from Waste Management and Atlantic. And I don't believe, it would have had no effect on, you know, the selection of the contractor for the services. So before we came to counsel with an amendment to the contract, we wanted to make sure that you're okay with the change. If not, then the rate would stay as it is, and basically, it affects, my understanding is for the commercial customers. So just looking for direction on whether counsel approves the change, and we come back with an amendment, or whether you don't approve the rate change.
Henry?
Yeah, I definitely will approve of the change. It's less money.
It would be more money.
So I put it down for like $20 less.
No, currently, the rate is $49 per cubic yard.
No, I don't mean that.
What they're asking for is $121.77.
My explanation is $121 and change is less money that was proposed by the other hall.
Oh, okay.
That's what I meant to say.
All right.
Okay, so it is less money.
I see what you're saying.
Right, yes, then Waste Management's, yes, you're correct.
Anybody else? Mark, comment? I think I just have a practical question. I'm sympathetic to a typo or, you know, a simple error, but why is it that a cubic, one cubic yard of one kind of waste costs a lot more than another kind? Is it because the tipping fees are based on weight? I mean, a cubic yard is a cubic yard. What is, is it hazardous?
Brian Lynn Beck's here, go answer that.
And the reason, just so you know why I'm asking, we did receive a lot of calls about the increase that went into effect, that's what we negotiated, that's not a fault, you didn't do anything wrong, I'm not accusing you of anything, but I had to explain that. And I want to be able to explain this when I get, if and when I get a call for it, that's all I'm asking for.
Right, no, that's fine. What the difference is, and I want to keep the $49 rate for the small compacters, there's one, actually only one small compactor right now, there is a compactor that can be picked up by the regular truck that goes out and picks up all the commercial routes, he's always out there, that can be picked up, that's $49 just for a two-to-six-yard compactor. We will keep that rate for there. The example sheet we were given had two line items, one for that and one for roll-off. Roll-off requires a 30-yard, it requires a different truck to go out once a week separately with a separate driver for a separate purpose, and it's a lot heavier and a lot more to do, and that is why the rate is higher for the trucking and everything else, it's a very different truck. The other one is done with a regular routine truck. I can show you guys what the example sheet looked like originally, and what we looked at, and we kept waiting for the second roll-off side, but they never gave us a line for that. And then when they dropped it down, our small compactor rate, they dropped it down into the roll-off section, and that's where the mistake was made. It should have stayed up.
I accept your explanation, and that's fine. I'm curious, though, how many customers do you think will be impacted by this?
Three.
Three, oh, okay, all right, that's...
Yeah, and where it was, the old rate was 106, and we went to 121.
Okay, no problem.
Okay, yeah, I...
Anybody else?
I just think you guys have done a great job, the transition between the two, you didn't miss a beat. I mean, we did have four garbage cans out there because they hadn't picked up yet, but it's been very smooth, the pickup's been nice, and everybody in my neighborhood likes a big cans, so, thank you.
Appreciate it. Yeah, catching up on a schedule was really difficult, because there was a little bit of overflow from, you know, the Christmas...
So Brian, for some of the cans that aren't picked up yet by Waste Management, will they be coming back around so we let the people know, or should we offer to take those there ourself?
They are supposed to be coming back around and still going through and picking them up.
Well, I'll tell you what happened was, when they, you said, your little note on our cans said, put them out there January 1st, but like my recycling was filled between Christmas and New Year, so when they came to pick up the cans, if they had anything in them, Advanced Disposal left them. And then they came back through another day and emptied them, turned every can upside down, signaling, I guess, to whoever's going to pick them up that they're empty now and come back and get them. So I think that's going to be addressed.
We went through and cleaned them all up.
Was that you? Okay, well, another good job.
No, I made a promise to Maria, we wouldn't leave any garbage out.
Your guys picked up everybody's can.
We picked up everything.
Oh, did you?
We did not leave it, I told her I would not leave garbage on the ground, and we picked everything up from all cans the full week after.
Yeah, because I called Maria and said, you know, there's, my neighbors have the recycling cans full, and when they came through, they didn't touch the full ones, because it was after the first. So it was you?
Right.
Bravo, good job.
Thank you. I made a promise to Maria, we wouldn't do that.
Maybe they're going to come and finish picking up, because I've seen them around town.
They are supposed to be.
Okay.
I don't know if they've been in touch with AJ or that, but they are supposed to be still picking up.
Okay. So AJ, can we just, can you give us a little report on that so the people know what, keep those Waste Management cans or Advanced cans by the road so they can pick them up?
Yeah, absolutely. We did a posting, I think it was last week, they started, I believe they started in Plantation Key, and they're working their way south, but they said it'd take about 10 days or so to pick them all up, but just leave them out there, just like normal pickup. Some people have been taping them shut, so nobody throws a little extra trash in them or whatever. or whatever it may be, but just leave them out there, and they're coming around and collecting them.
Okay, all right. Thank you, AJ. Thank you, Brian. Are we, where's Maria? So we're good, Maria?
Yes, we'll come back with an amendment and a resolution, likely for the next consent agenda.
Okay.
To make that correction.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Maria. Counsel, everybody good?
Yep.
Okay, all right. Okay, so we'll move on then. Tab three, bid request for direction regarding new bids. Maria, tab three?
Okay. For this meeting, Vice Mayor Mahoney had requested that a discussion item be added to the agenda regarding an RFP for grant writing services. And then separately, Councilwoman Jo Lynn reminded me about an RFP for holiday lights that had been previously discussed. And I therefore thought it would be an appropriate time to provide the village council with an explanation of our process for issuing RFPs or other bid documents, to provide the village council with the status of RFPs in process or pending, based on items included in the FY 2324 budget, and to advise council of some new purchase or service requests that were not included in the budget. My goal is to address concerns expressed by council and the public that staff acts without informing council, or that the village does not operate with transparency. The schedule I provided behind the council communication at tab three lists the bid processes that have been completed this year. It also lists the bids that are currently open, pending the deadline date for submission of proposals. The bids that are pending, based on inclusion in the budget for the purchase or service listed. And then finally, what I'm referring to is new services or purchases about which I would like to make council aware, or that staff needs additional information about in order to proceed. So before getting into the new items, I wanted to ask if council has any questions regarding the completed, open, or pending bids.
I have a question. So, and I'm sorry I didn't ask you this earlier, but when you have this pending list, does that mean they, you haven't, you haven't put them out?
We haven't put them out yet. We're working on them. And our process, I explained it in the council communication, but we basically have one individual that's our procurement and grants administrator. And every year, you know, we budget for certain items, and then we have to go through and identify which ones would require a bid process. So essentially, that's what you see here in the completed, open, and pending are those items that we've identified. But we can only do so many bid issuances at a time. We have one person. It involves developing a scope of work or a scope of services, and a lot of times that requires research. You know, we pull RFPs and bid documents from other local governments. And then the whole evaluation process, setting up a committee, you know, all of that takes time. So that's why we can't do them all at once, basically. So these items in the first three categories were included in the budget, and we're working on them as we can, or as we identify something as a priority. Okay, so as I mentioned, Vice Mayor Mahoney had suggested that we issue a competitive bid for grant writing services, and this was not a service that was included in our adopted budget. So at this point, I think I'd like to ask Vice Mayor Mahoney to speak to this and...
I will, and I have to sing the praises of Judy in the audience. She has been very helpful to me. When I started the ride share, looking into grants and everything, there's a lot of grants out there. And actually, I talked to Judy, and it was her suggestion that there are a lot of grant writers who don't get paid, they get a percentage of the grants they get. So the more money we, they get for us, good for us, and they make more money. I would like to look into that, where it has no impact on our budget. And I know, I run a 501(c)(3), and I have a girl who writes grants for myself and three other rescues. And I wouldn't still be running around spaying and neutering cats if it wasn't for her. So they're wonderful to have. I think, you know, of course, I don't know how the RFP would go out, that's not my expertise, but Judy today sent me some names of people. I think we could pick her brain a little bit. She suggested somebody that, I guess, gave seminars on grants. So I'd like to look at it from the view of not a paid position of them making a percentage of the grants they get. I think that's sort of, and there's grants for the arts, for playgrounds, for libraries, for everything. And I think we should be doing more than we're doing to get grants. You guys have a full plate. I can't expect you to sit up at night and fill out grant stuff. So I think this might be a win-win for everybody and for all of us if we looked into somebody who worked on commission.
So what you're saying is they work on a, some of these people you're talking about work on a contingency. If they get the grant, they get their percentage.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And Judy knows much more than I do. She's been very helpful, so thank you. So I think it'd be a win-win.
So just to clarify, we have engaged a contractor previously for the purpose, for this purpose. And so we already have an RFP that's pretty much ready to go. We'll just update it. Generally, staff that worked with the particular contractor that was selected, I believe it was like in 2018, that contractor, we didn't feel that they were especially knowledgeable or helpful, so we terminated that contract. And it, sometimes in the field, our experience, especially even dealing with some of the FEMA work and some of the people that say that they're consultants, a lot of times they're kind of learning on the job. So we just have to, you know, we look out for that.
I'd be more than glad to share the names that she sent me today. And that might be, you know, a way to look. And plus, you know, there's always constant change. There might be somebody who's perfect, who only wants a very small percentage. And again, anything we get for free, it's a bonus. So that's what I'm looking at.
Okay, so like I said, we do have a RFP that's pretty much ready to go, so it's just a matter of issuing that RFP. And if there's no cost to the village, it's something that would fall within manager authority, but we would definitely update council, you know, through the after-action report.
I'd like to make a comment or question, suggestion kind of a thing. I've had a little bit of experience. I had one experience, I would say. I hired a private grant writer for me to help me get a USDA grant to install a solar system on a farm I owned. And I learned from that process, and I got it. And then I learned from that process that there are individuals that specialize in a certain narrow area. You know, it can be FEMA, it can be Investment, whatever Reduction Act, or whatever all these acronyms are for all these things that got passed recently. But there's gobs and gobs of money out there, and I don't know that a generalist that sits in our office that has not had that experience would be effective at obtaining that. However, someone who knows about grants in general could certainly go on the search and say, oh, this is a consulting firm that specializes in, you know, mitigation, stormwater mitigation grants, FEMA grants, you know, environmental grants, whatever, all kinds of grants. So I would like us to figure out, maybe Kimberly can help us with that, but, you know, there's a ton of money, and I think whomever we would employ, whether as a vendor, or an employee, or a commissioned agent, or whatever, they would earn their keep in multiples by bringing things back to us. We're nuts not to pursue this. Thank you for bringing it up. So if that's another element of this grant writing effort that we're making, I would like to offer that as something we should be doing.
Well, the League of Cities also, Mark, has webinars and has conferences all about this, about grants and certain type of grants, and they promote this.
We get these things in our mail all the time. I don't know what they mean. We got a, I got a big one the other day from, oh my gosh, I can't even remember what it was. Marnie sent it to us. And I started reading it, my eyes glazed over, because I don't speak grant talk. It's too complicated. It's really complicated. But if we have somebody that's fluid with that, that we can, I can talk to and they can translate for me, that would be, or us, that would be great, so.
So are you okay?
Can I make a comment on this? And I know we sometimes have, we sort of have communication issues with what we think we're asking for, and then, you know, and then, so to be clear, I mean, we're not the first city that's ever existed, and I have a feeling that this is being done in a robust way in other cities. And I wonder if the direction is not put out an RFP for a grant writer or a grant service, but to do some research on how other communities address the broad swath of grant searches. And before we move forward on something specific, because we're not looking for a grant person, we are looking for a method to actively pursue the variety of grants that a growing community needs. Maybe you could come on that, Kimberly.
Well, my concern at this point, though, is that we're not failing at getting grants.
No one's...
So I certainly don't want that to be the impression. Staff has been very successful, and we did get a grant for Freebie. So what ends up happening, and I've explained this before, especially with the transit grants, a lot of times they're for lower income areas. It's to promote connectivity, it's to provide a transportation source for people that can't afford vehicles or car insurance. We don't exactly qualify for that. So there are a number of grants. Whenever we hear about a grant opportunity, either Mary or a department director will participate in whatever webinar to learn more, you know, about it. So it's, I don't want us going down the road of there's a problem we're trying to solve. If we can get a grant writing service to find a grant, great, but I don't, you know, if they can, great, but...
I think it's worth looking into. I mean...
Right. It's worth looking into to help supplement staff, but...
100% win-win for everybody. So, and I don't, no one thinks you guys don't do what you're supposed to do. That's not my intention. My intention was to have somebody who wouldn't impact the budget, who could also make some money, because we could cover a wide range of grants. And I know there's specialized ones, like the woman who writes for me. But I just wanted to see if everybody was, thought it was a good call, and that we should just investigate it. And I'll give you the names, and maybe you can talk to other, like Elizabeth said.
And we are aware of what other local governments do, and what other local governments do is what we are doing.
Yeah, well, Maria, I...
You know, we go to GF-A-Wave, it's all part of the finance umbrella, to go to conferences and learn about procurement, learn about grants.
Yeah, I want to say something on your behalf, that, listen, I don't know how many people in this room know about how much money that Hurricane Irma cost the county, cost us, but I will tell you that she got back, our Finest Department, the last was like eight million that we got back from FEMA, and it was like, what, less than $6,000 of every...
That was denied in that project.
Yeah, yeah, so out of, how much money was that, Maria? How many millions, 10...
Well, our total expense was 10 million, and I think that we were denied, it was less than 100,000, so.
Yeah, so I'm saying, we got a lot of bang for our buck out of that with our staff, so I want to say, you know, that our staff does work hard to be frugal, and I was impressed when I heard the numbers, that what we, you know, how much money we spent and what we got reimbursed, so.
I agree with that, Maria. I didn't mean to suggest...
No, I don't.
But what I'm suggesting is, I've just learned that the grant writing is complex, there's probably thousands of them available. I don't know that one human can keep up with that. In my case, we had, the grant writer had to employ an engineer to put in data to get that. So it's, you know, there's a lot to it, but y'all do a great job and have done it for us, and we're, I'm in particular grateful for that, as Buddy was talking about with the FEMA work. That was a magic trick, and I don't know that we could repeat it, so thank you.
Okay, so are we good?
Wait a minute. No, I'm still unclear what it is, where I, I want to make sure that we are clear on what it is we're asking, because this happens a lot. And I would reiterate that there is no accusation here, it's simply that we're broadening the conversation. So can we just, can we, can you tell me what it is we're doing?
So, if I may...
This would go on the after-action report.
Correct. So if I may, what I'm hearing is a desire to make sure that we are, to the best of our ability, pursuing all of the grants that we have an opportunity to pursue, whatever course that might be, whether it's subject matter experts in those grants, whether it's one individual person who's a point person within our staff who's caretaking that. It sounds like we're already getting a lot of grants, and we're being very successful. And so maybe it's something that, again, I've been here two days. So we look at, and we look at what we've gone in place, we look at how the best way to proceed forward is, whether that is getting somebody in the different subject areas that is subject matter expert, and then does, as you mentioned, take a percentage of the grant? Or is that a person on our staff that maybe Maria needs an augmentation to her own team to be a point person specifically on grants? But maybe let us, as a staff, go back, talk about what that looks like, and then we'll come back to you with a recommendation of, do we feel like we have the infrastructure in place to get all the grants that we have at our disposal? Or do we need some type of augmentation?
Okay.
Does that sound...
Thank you.
...appropriate?
Kimberly?
Okay.
That's good. Maria, thank you. I think we're good? Do you have anything else?
I have more.
You do? Okay, go ahead.
All right, so you don't want us to put out the RFP yet for grant writing services? Go ahead and evaluate it and come back.
It's exactly what she just said.
Right, I understand that.
And I'll give you the names that Judy gave me, and we'll just take the...
All right, so another thing under new is just that I've listed an RFP for fraud, waste, and abuse hotline. This is not because I'm suspecting any fraud, waste, or abuse, but this is basically a standard now in local government, finance, local government, you know. If they have an internal auditor, normally they'll set up like a fraud, waste, and abuse hotline. I've researched companies that provide the service, and I really don't think it would cost over $25,000 a year. Therefore, the procurement would likely fall within village manager authority. But I would like to get something in place before a new village manager starts, and thought it best to solicit village council support before evaluating and securing a service.
I have a question. What is that, a hotline? What is it for? What does it do?
Well, what it's meant to do is provide an avenue, especially for employees, to be able to call anonymously. And let's say it's a subordinate employee that feels that there's something that their supervisor's doing that's improper, then they can anonymously report this to the hotline. And then the, depending on the service provider, they will assist with an investigation if necessary. So that's the purpose. And it's a, it's a recommendation of both the Government Finance Officers Association and the American Institute of CPAs, both for public and private entities to have these hotlines. It's also to promote, what's it called? No, that. When someone...
Whistleblower?
Whistleblower, yes. Promote whistleblowing. So anyway, so I just wanted to make everyone aware that it's my goal to go ahead and get this set up, but probably wouldn't have to come back to council depending on the cost. But, you know, just so no one thinks that there's a fraud, waste, and abuse issue at the village.
So are you just informing us of this, or are you looking for some input?
Both. Informing you that I would like to do this, and if council has any concerns, certainly please raise them now.
I think it's a good idea. You know, it's a modern, modern way to go.
So it's, this is for, and, you know, actually, what I would like is more information before I give a bunch of input, because it's, I mean, you just said a lot of things, and I'm unclear what this $25,000 will get us. It sounds like it's an employee...
It's not, it would probably be less than 25,000. We're looking at maybe $100 a month.
So it's a way for employees to call and say, I'm, I'm, I mean, so this kind of conversation is going to, you know, we're, this is taking a long time, and I wish I had more information so I didn't have to ask you this right now. But, so it's an employee. It's something for our employees.
Employees and the public.
Public can call whenever they feel.
We would have the number on our website, available on the website for people to call, or a lot of times there'll be just a separate form if someone wants to mail it in.
But it provides anonymity to promote people using it.
And you said there is an issue?
No.
Are you sure you're not like?
Well, I don't know.
I don't know. Some people may utilize it way too much. There you go. I heard that.
Unless you'd like me to wait until the new manager starts and, you know, get them. I just, I had brought it up a couple of times before, and truthfully, managers were not in favor of establishing this hotline. So that's why, you know, I see it as a standard now within establishing internal controls. And I'm suggesting to implement it now. But if you'd rather hold on it, we can.
Kimberly?
I would just simply say that, you know, in an effort to be, and as we grow in our transparency and our open government, you know, this is, as I was just talking with John, at the state level, you might refer to this as the Office of the Investigator General, that it's another opportunity to allow for both our employees and the residents to have an avenue to let us know if they feel that there's a concern. And so, to me, if you're doing everything that you're supposed to do, and you're doing it right, you should never be concerned about one more avenue that allows people to voice any concerns that they have.
I'm in favor of it. I mean, I don't want to force anything, Elizabeth, that you're uncomfortable with, but for 100 bucks a month, I mean, you know.
I mean, no idea. No, no, with.
I can come back with more information or email information.
Okay. Okay. So can we move down the list, Maria?
So what's the, what are we doing?
She's gonna get us more information. That's what you asked for.
Just want to make sure we're all clear.
Okay. All right. Okay, Maria, can we move on down the list?
All right. Yes. And I'm sorry I'm bringing these issues up for your consideration, but it's part of village business, and I need this guidance. So, anyway, the village owns three boats that it provides for use by the Monroe County Sheriff's Office Marine Unit assigned to Isla Marata. The current boats include a 2006 25-foot Angler, a 2014 22-foot Pathfinder, and a 2022 25-foot Pathfinder.
Could you repeat that? I'm sorry. Could you just repeat that? I wouldn't realize. Could you say that again?
That, that we have three boats that we provide for use by the Sheriff's Office Marine Unit, assigned to Isla Marata. Do you want me to?
Repeat it, if you could. I just.
The current boats include a 2006 25-foot Angler, a 2014 22-foot Pathfinder, and a 2022 25-foot Pathfinder. Captain Paul has requested that the village replace the 2006 boat with a new boat. And to do so, we would need to issue a, an invitation to bid for the purchase. Funds for this purchase were not included in the 2324 budget. So before issuing the bid document, I wanted to make sure that the village council was aware of the request. Captain Paul did obtain one preliminary quote, and the amount was approximately $200,000 for a 28-foot contender. The vendor thought that they were part of a state contract, but this was not the case. In looking at a state contract for fire and law enforcement boats, the cost can go up to $350,000. The intent was to release the bid document and then return to council with additional information regarding the need for the boat, its use, and the proposals received to facilitate a decision by council on whether or not to authorize the purchase.
So Maria, I have a question. How much money did the sheriff give us last, give us back last year?
The sheriff's office refunded the village over $245,000, $240,000 in April of 2023, which was from cost savings on police services, on the police services contract for FY2122. This year, we are expecting a refund of over $300,000. The bulk of the refund is returned to the general fund with a purchase returned, with a portion returned to the capital project fund. The funding source for a new boat purchase would be local government discretionary sales surtax accounted for in the capital project fund. Purchase of public safety equipment and vehicles is an allowable use under those funds. Captain Paul is here. If you would like to hear more about the need for the boat, what the purpose is, what the marine unit does, but it's not quite the same as the fireboat, because this is an existing service, so.
Good evening, Captain Paul.
Good evening. Thank you. The, the current Angler is on its third set of motors for almost 4,000 hours currently. It's an aging asset, and by looking at comparable boats, obviously 28, 25-footers, 28-footer, the quote that we currently got was just kind of getting the feelers out for a boat. We do have the 25-foot Pathfinder, which is a, which is a bayboat, great for nearshore water and so forth. The 26 Angler is great for going offshore and handling anything in rougher weather. Obviously, when it's blowing 15 or above, getting out on a 25-foot Pathfinder is a little rough. So we do use the Angler quite a bit. With its age, we backed off its use. We do use the vest. We have two marine units assigned to the village of Isla Marata full-time. I say full-time. They do work road patrol sometimes, but they are assigned through road, to, to the marine unit. What the focus, a lot of what they do is ordinance enforcement. And what I mean by that is the 300-foot idle, the 300-foot rule around mini-season, the swim zone at White Marlin, those type village ordinances are not enforced by the state or by the federal government. Obviously, if we call FWC to assist us, they will go and address it, but they will not enforce these, these ordinances. So Nelson and Marty have done a lot of enforcement of those areas. They also handle resource violations. They do safety inspections. They handle, they do a lot of wake violations in the Whale Harbor area when it gets real busy and overwhelming. So there's, 2002 is when the village decided to incorporate a marine unit with the two guys, and it's been a very successful unit. And again, the Anglers are just starting to age and starting to cost a lot in maintenance and.
You're putting, so you're basically, what you're doing is you're throwing good money after bad, because you're, everything, when you replace one thing, then another thing goes. I mean, where's the, where do we stop?
Correct. I got a, don't quote me on the cost, but current, to get the Angler, one of the motors back up operational is like $7,000 right now. It's running now, but it needs some more, some more work. So we, by looking at the age of it and looking at the cost of keeping it up and running, we decided to start thinking about, approaching you about replacing it.
The replacement boat that you were talking about was, is that a contender?
2000 is what, is what we've got a quote on, so.
Okay.
For $198.
Okay.
That's turnkey, electronics, that's everything.
Twin motors, right?
Bike.
Twin, 300s or something?
300s, that's true.
Okay. Okay.
Council, any questions for Captain Paul?
No, no. I'd like seeing the sheriff out on the water when I'm out there. I think that's a great service and gives a feeling of somebody's watching. There's so many times I've seen bad things happen, and there's no one around. But if you've been through Whale Harbor Channel on a busy weekend, it's, it's all hands on deck. So I think, what he's, what I'm hearing is you need a more robust hull to handle rougher seas and offshore. So that's the reason for the bigger deep V.
The guys aren't limited when it comes to, to a windier day. They used the 26 a lot during those, during that time. You know, again, the flatboat's great, especially over here on the bayside. But when it gets a little rougher, they're, you know, it's hard for me to ask them to go out on a 25-foot Pathfinder when it's, you know, a rough day. So they get landlocked.
Someone could get hurt, too. So that's important in a rough day.
Yeah. So.
Okay. So I think personally, when you said seven grand, I mean, that makes sense when a boat starts aging and getting that many hours on the motor, everything, and things, other things keep going. Because I think one day you told me about the lift or something, something else was going, and you, you guys chose not to throw the money at it, because it's just, you know, it's endless haul.
Yeah, we're kind of in a holding pattern with the kind of sea, you know, put the feelers out for this.
Okay. Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Derek.
So are we taking action on that tonight, or what's, I mean?
I'm just requesting confirmation from council that we can go out to bid for the purchase of a replacement boat.
Why not?
And you just told us about the money, where the sheriff's money goes to, and the sales tax and all that, so we're.
Right. The revenue source would be the discretionary sales surtax from the capital project fund.
Okay. Okay. Anybody have any other questions for Maria? Okay. All right. What else, Maria? What else is?
All right. So finally, I'd just like some clarification and guidance from council regarding the holiday lights and a potential need to improve electric sources in the areas and parks where lights and displays are installed. I think, as most of us have noticed, the lights and displays don't do very well in the rain. The GFIs on the displays along the overseas highway near Village Hall and at the Hurricane Monument kept popping because of rain and humidity. I understand that there was an expectation of council that the trees at South Winds Park be wrapped with white lights, but the electric source there is no longer on. So we weren't able to include that in the lighting that the Public Works Department takes care of, and some electrical work there is needed. We have one more year on our contract with Holiday Light Scapes. It was a three-year contract, and the yearly payment has been approximately $105,000. They're based in Satellite Beach and require a 48-hour response time to address maintenance issues. But issues associated with electric source are the responsibility of the village. I checked the contract, and if we terminate before the three-year term, we're required to pay 30% for any remaining years. So in this case, we would have to pay up to $32,000 to get out of the contract. So last month, there was a suggestion that the village issue an RFP for a new holiday light contractor, and that lighting for South Winds Park and perhaps along the Marata Way, on the light poles that we installed be included, because we'd have to pay the $32,000 to get out of the contract. My suggestion is that we first engage an electrical contractor to address issues at the locations planned to have lighting, and then we see if Holiday Light Scapes will change deliverables so that we wrap the entrance trees at Founder's Park, wrap the trees at South Winds Park, and then have them provide decorations that can be hung from the light poles that we installed at Marata Way, because each one of those poles has a plug. So if we had the kind of decorations that kind of hang, and then we could plug them And then, as far as the Hurricane Monument, we'd need to see if they can install the display more firmly so that it doesn't get blown over. And I'm talking that one that's like an ornament. It kept blowing over, and I think the Christmas tree kept blowing over. So, but that would be my suggestion, rather than going out for an RFP right now. Go ahead and work with them, get something that's maybe a little simpler, I think wrapping trees. That way, we're not dealing with those fish and jellyfish and things like that. That just didn't seem to work. So I don't know, based on your observations over the Christmas holidays, how you feel about what we should do next year.
Maria, it sounds like we have two problems. One is our own owned electric service is defective. So if we're gonna have lights, we have to fix that, and that's on us.
Correct.
And then the rest is, you know, dealing with the decorations blowing in the wind.
Right.
I guess. Is that, is that a fair summary of what we're talking about?
Yes.
Henry? Go ahead and ask, Henry?
Go ahead.
To me, it seems like, okay, let's take South Winds Park. I don't think we should fix the electric to fix, fix the Christmas decorations. I think we should look at what the plans are for every holiday and every event and have the electricity fixed, not just for Christmas. That seems to me, I mean, what is in that park? Nothing? I mean.
Right. That's the reason the electric, when the village took it over.
So what's the plans for the park, I guess I should say? Just leave it as it is? Or is there plans to maybe do something there?
Yeah, just put in vegetation, right? And we didn't need electric for anything. There was no need for electric.
So that would be the only thing. So you're never planning on having an event down there or do anything there? Because it would make more sense to make the electric for everything and not just for Christmas lights. But if, is this gonna be?
Well, and, you know, that's hard to say at this point, you know, whether we would have any event down at South Winds, I really don't know. Is it worth making the investment in approving the electric, potentially?
That's what I think we should address, myself. What do you think?
So I think that the last time we had, I think we've had this conversation a couple of times, and I think that what we, my recollection is that we were, we were concerned about the cost. We wanted to lower the cost. We wanted to spread out the lights. And I don't, I mean, personally, I don't care what that looks like. I don't even know if, if, how much more conversation we need to have about the exact location of where Christmas holiday lights go in our town, except that I think we were in agreement a couple of times about lowering the price and spreading them outside of the park. Is that fair enough? I mean, I don't think we need to micromanage this to, to, too much more. Do you?
Well, this is also a follow-up to Councilman Rosenthal's suggestion that we have more lights, so I, you know, and that was when the proposal was to go ahead, maybe put out an RFP.
My opinion, we don't go out for another RFP, because then we're just wasting $32,000. Why don't we let these people do next, this coming year? And then if we want to change to, from some of these ornaments that were out here to South Winds or wherever, we just try to make it better, but we, we, we do have another year. Why have to pay them $32,000 and not get any service?
Okay. And so just do the best we can with them.
That's different than what you were asking about, isn't it?
I mean, am I, am I, did I, did we not have a conversation about lowering the price? Who can, I mean, I'm sure that.
Okay, but, but we've already committed to this contract, Elizabeth.
Right. But at a certain rate, so we need more information. Was it at a certain rate? Are we committed to paying $105,000 for?
Yes.
And so, well, I'm sorry, I didn't understand that. And so now I do. And so with that, and we're not gonna lose 30%, so great. We're gonna see the same lights this year than we did next year that we are this year. Is that fair enough?
No, we can probably, they can work to, instead of like she's saying, the jellyfish and stuff, we wrap the trees and we don't.
Okay. I'm sorry. I.
Well, and council weighed in on the original plan for these lights. We had to bring back a design to council of what would go where.
That wasn't us.
Right. But, and then Councilman Rosenthal had some concerns, wanted more lights. That's why I'm coming back to council. It certainly is a topic that council has brought up and addressed.
And I agree with you. And again, if, if we can work with this company and not lose money, and just have them, if we're not doing else at South Winds Park, then do the lights or the electric where it's gonna suit just to wrap the trees or whatever. And the only complaint.
I just want to confirm, no new RFP at this time.
No. And I gotta tell you, the only complaint I have is a lot of people say, why is it just in Founder's Park? Is it just for the employees? Or is it for the community? That, that's what people said.
There you go.
Yeah. So if we could spread them out, I think you'd make a lot of people happy.
Okay. So our staff's gonna?
So are you asking for the lights to be spread out? So we can, we can understand this on our after-action.
If possible, if there's electric to spread them out. But there may not be an electric source to be able to do that. So that's why we couldn't wrap the lights at South Winds.
I didn't say, that cheated.
No, 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 no. If we wrap them at South Winds, then we have to fix the.
Well, I know.
Right.
So do you, so we're all clear, and we don't have to talk about this again. Do you want them to fix the electric at South Winds?
Let it, let it, just take this little wrench and go down there and check it out.
So, yes. It sounds like we want you to fix the lights at South Winds and put lights there. Is that fair to say? Is that fair to say?
And fix whatever at the monument, come up with a better fix so that thing doesn't blow over because people were in line there to get...
Okay, is that, so...
So if I may, what I'm hearing, without having council get too far in the weeds of deciding what jellyfish goes where, what I'm hearing is that we're gonna work with the current contract that we have, which unfortunately, we, we can't lower the cost because we are under contract. When we come back, we'll talk about what the council's taste is for spending on Christmas lights for the next RFP. But this next year, we'll work with the contract we have. We will attempt to look at the options for spreading out the lights, doing things different that, that we know failed this year, and we hope that you like it better. Does that sound good?
Totally fine.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much for indulging me.
Oh, I started this.
Maria, thank you.
I just started, that's it. I wanted to continue, I wanna add to it.
Not unless you're gonna do it for free.
No, I wanna add to it. You go first class, you go first class.
Go on with your bad self.
Right.
Go on.
Okay, can we move on from this now? I mean, I think we, we got it. I mean, I personally think that the electric should be fixed if we're gonna have, if we're gonna have ornaments there, okay? It doesn't cost that much to get an electrician out there and put some GFIs for...
Our electric was fine.
Huh?
Our electric was fine.
It was fine?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's the power cords.
Oh, the power cords, okay, all right. Okay, thank you, AJ. Okay, so we are moving on here rapidly. So Chief Abel.
Tab 1B, I guess, I don't know, just kidding. So what you have before you is a comeback again from the two previous discussions that we've had, reference the fireboat and emergency, marine emergency response aspect. What we're asking, because it's time sensitive, is that you consider the submittal for the appropriations to go to the Florida Legislative through Representative Lauren Mello's office for a fireboat for consideration in the next session. And then if it goes through that committee, goes through session, gets approved, it goes to the governor's office early midsummer, and then it would come to us later in the fall. So if we approve now to hit the submittal, it would go for submittal. And then again, later in the fall, once we got it, it would come back for you guys for a later approval again. Fireboat program, I've explained it to nausea, just trying to close a gap, save lives, make a difference. But the program's a different aspect. This is the appropriations for the fireboat. And if you're for any questions, then I have Chief, that's in charge of actually the MERC program for Collier, Col, Charlotte, and Lee County as well, if you have questions on the MERC program specific.
Okay.
So let's deal with appropriations first.
Do you or John want to say something? Because I know you guys talked to me today about that in the briefing.
We did. So what we want to be clear about, about this agenda item is what we are, what staff is specifically requesting is approval to go out for the legislative appropriation, the potential to receive up to $300,000 for a marine rescue boat. That, as the chief has mentioned, that would not come back to us. We would not know if we were approved for that for many months, and staff will be working operationally internally to define what that program is, what the potential costs, risks, et cetera, are, and define all of that, to bring back to you as a council to approve the actual program if necessary. And also, we do know that there is an outstanding potential donation of a fireboat, that'll be a part of that. But I think it's important to meet the deadline for the legislative appropriation if we're gonna, otherwise, we'll be a couple of years out from getting that if we are interested. So we'd like to meet that deadline, that's in what, what's in front of you now. Then we'll bring back to you, in the meantime, the program and also the donation of the existing fireboat from the Benevolent Association.
Okay, thank you, Kimberly. Counsel, any questions for Kimberly or John or Terry?
Let me make sure I understand this right. So you just want to apply right now for the money? Because I have not seen anything that explains how this is gonna work. Are we gonna merge with maybe Marathon or Key Largo? I haven't, and then you say a donation. I heard, I heard reimbursement last time, so I, I don't know which ends up. But if it's just to apply and then maybe you could come back with a structured, how it's gonna work and how many people and, you know, how much gasoline's gonna cost for a year, a budget and everything? I mean, is that what you're proposing right now to...
Yes.
Yeah.
That is, that is exactly, we...
Because if we don't...
I understand.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Yes, we understand that there's many outstanding questions, and so we want to make sure that we have a fully vetted proposal to all of you that answers all of those questions. We will put that together. Right now, time sensitive is a deadline for the legislative appropriation.
I just have a question. So we spoke in our briefing about John getting in touch with whoever that is to talk about whether, if we are appropriated that money, and then we decide that that doesn't fit into our budget considering the potential other costs of the program, then are we in any way penalized for saying, no, thank you for the $300,000, but we want to, we want to apply for it next year when we actually have the money sorted out? Did you have that conversation or could you talk, speak to that point?
Yeah, I spoke with the lobbyist and he indicated that if you, if you apply for an appropriations request and it's granted, that you should be fully on board with, with going forward with that. And that if you don't, that there can be some negative, or ill will, and honestly, ill will is not the right word, but that it can negatively impact the state's view of future appropriations requests and because they, the state felt like there was time and political capital that was expended. So yes, it could have potential negative impact for future if we apply and do not accept. If, if we apply and accept and move forward, apparently, they're okay with that and you can continue, keep, to keep applying, so.
So, so, so if we apply to meet this deadline, I mean, what, it would jeopardize, I mean, if, if, because we, that would sort of force us to accept a marine emergency program if we want this $300,000 at now or in the future, and we don't have that in front of us. This is just very tricky, isn't it?
True, and I understand that. And I know that you all have been having conversations since long before my start time at 8:00 AM yesterday. So I would defer to you and to the chief. However, I think that certainly the chief has built up a strong reputation with all of you. You know he has the best of intentions, he's built a strong, solid program. But what we want to do is, rather than throw a program at you and ask for your approval without all of your answers, I think that we can build a solid proposal that I do believe will fill a gap, that will answer your questions. I feel strongly, after my conversations with the chief, that we can do that. If I didn't, I wouldn't be supporting this idea of going out for the appropriation, because I think we can all agree that there's been times where this is a gap. But we do need to put pen to paper, we need to answer all of your questions. I do think that within the next couple of months or the next month or so, the staff can do that to your satisfaction.
But we need to meet this appropriation deadline.
But if you want the opportunity to meet this appropriation without another delay of a couple of years, then we would like to do that. If you don't feel comfortable, then that's the will of council, and I would defer to your judgment.
So you're saying that we can't ask for this money next year? What's the delay for the couple of years? I'm not clear on that. Chief? Like, we don't have, we can't appropriate, we can't ask for the appropriation next year?
It, it would depend if it's something that's in the legislative body to bring forward for funding that year. It's kind of like grants, there's, there's inclusions and exclusions for each session.
So is it just that this, and, and thank you for helping me understand this better. So you're saying that this year...
We check the boxes.
I don't understand that. Like, this year, you're looking at donating...
We fall under something that's included under the committee, that they're, they're funding appropriations for. There's a half dozen different boxes that you check. It's in your agenda packet, some of the things that they, they checked off that we meet, and how, who it benefits and how it's gonna benefit the community. So we've got to meet certain boxes depending on which committee you're submitting to. Right now, we, we meet that committee in order to submit for appropriation to chase the fireboat. And this is not just the Alamarada thing, there's also appropriations being filed for Key Largo, Marathon, two for the county, Ocean Reef already has their boat, and Key West already has a boat. So this is not just a me, this is a countywide thing we're trying to bring down into Monroe County. We're just slightly ahead of the curve, that's all. And we're trying to bring a program that's tried and true, like you stated at our briefings yesterday. Think of it as a, we're bringing a pilot program of what's tried and true, working on the west coast to the Keys to see if it'll work here and have a benefit to our community as well.
Yeah, and isn't that Representative Mellow, don't, don't they have, I mean, there's a big push for this right now, and even in Tallahassee, I mean, there's a lot of momentum going, right? Am I wrong or right?
No, you're, you're spot on, Mayor. The, the reason Rep. Mellow is chasing this instead of our representative, Mooney, is because Rep. Mooney's the chair of the board. He can't propose an appropriation for the committee that he's the chair of. There's also the aspect where Rep. Mellow spent much of her childhood growing up in the Lower Keys and in Marathon, and unfortunately, had a serious accident in her later teen years and woke up in a hospital in Miami and it's like, whoa, what the heck? And she realized that, you know, the resources aren't what they should be, and she's gonna try to help close the gap. There's also the event with Ms. June Smith with her daughter tragically, August 11th of 2017, where she lost her daughter in a boating accident. Called for help, called 911, called Coast Guard, called FWC, no resources were available. It actually took a towboat vessel to come out and pull their daughter from their boat with an adult from their boat to do CPR while they brought the child into shore. So she's been an advocate to help push this as well. I've been pushing for years, I've spoken with governor's office, senators' offices, FWC, Homeland Security, Port Authorities, you name it, trying to get any boats that are, you know, demilitarized or taken out of service so that we could start a program here. So this is nothing that just popped up, it's something that I've been trying to do behind the scenes for six, eight years or better.
Email from June Smith today.
Okay, she, she's, she's a mother and she's trying hard to do what's right, and we're there to support her. I'm also on the board for Heart Like Harley, which is her foundation that she started. We also have Mark, a fellow board member, and like I said, he's the head of MERC for three counties on the east coast, he's the chief of Yusepa Island. So he's an island, he's got lots of boats. And if he's got questions on the MERC program itself, he's more than happy to explain that. But right now, we're worried about appropriations deadlines, less on the program.
Okay.
But he's here, I'd love to have him an opportunity to speak.
Yeah. Henry, you have anything you want to add? Mark? Okay. All right, so counsel, where are we? Let's make a decision here. Because there's no guarantees that this could be around next year. I mean, yeah, you can go for it, but...
There's no guarantees we get this money this round, and there's no guarantees it'll be open next year or year after. It's a matter of when the cycle comes back around, so.
Well, why don't we just apply for it and do it?
I, Henry, I agree with you.
That's why I'm here.
Okay, you got my vote.
Thank you.
Okay. Elizabeth, we got your thumbs up? Yep?
Yeah, sure, I mean, this doesn't, this doesn't obligate us to make a decision about a marine program in any way, and, and I'm saying that just sort of on the record because I know that we are fiscally responsible and we would want to see a thorough detailed plan about what it is we're purchasing, and that's really my main concern here. It's not about the, the need for the program, I'm sure that'll be proven in, in what you bring forward. And so I just, sort of, I'm saying that to identify everyone's interest here, probably more for the public than anyone, in our need to continue to be fiscally transparent.
Vice Mayor? Okay, Mark? Okay. Chief?
Thank you. Could I give Chief Mark 30 seconds to talk, three minutes? And let's grab coffee at Bayside Gourmet. I've got a corner table where they just know what I drink and let's chat and we can discuss all this. That's open invite for all five of you.
Okay. Chief?
Thank you, by the way.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone.
Tell us who you are and where you're from.
Hello, my name is Mark Mascarelli, and I am from Lee County, Florida. I came all the way down here today just for this meeting. I didn't tow a boat behind me, I didn't come down with my family on vacation. That's how important I feel this is to the citizens of the Keys. Having fireboats has just become normal to me from where I'm from, and it was a shock that they only had two down here when June and I first started our mission trying to figure out what, why things happened the way they did for her that day. I'm just gonna read off what I wrote, it probably explains some of the stuff he already said, but it's, probably goes smoother, I know everyone wants to get out of here tonight, right? So, like I said, I'm, I'm the fire chief of Yusepa Island in Lee County. I also am the marine emergency response team leader for Lee County, Collier and Collier, Charlotte, and I also work closely with Wysond on the, the west coast inland navigation district, which covers four counties also on the west coast of Florida. I'm here to support Chief Abel and commend him for taking a progressive step in the right direction, which is exactly what you want a good leader to do. Let's talk fireboats. I am not a resident here, but I have been coming here since I was 19 years old. In fact, my first trip to the Keys was right here in Alamarada. So this place is really special to me. I just can't, I still remember the day I came down for the first time out there on the water with my friends and boats and spearfishing and diving, and it's just, this place, plus Bloodline, I kind of love that show. All right, I gotta throw, throw it out there. But anyway, I love Alamarada, this is my favorite spot in the Keys, and I still continue to come down here. I still continue to come down with my family, I enjoy boating and diving here for family and friends. I came all the way here from Lee County just to stand here in front of you because no boat, no one should ever have to be out there like June was and not have a boat coming to their aid. That's something we kind of determined decades ago in Lee County, when it got so overwhelming for the law enforcement, Coast Guard, FWC, there's just, there's just too many calls. Our area exploded, and things just got so crazy and we needed to step up. The fire department stepped up and said, we gotta, we gotta respond to our citizens. No one's going out to help them, there's just not enough vessels out there, law enforcement or Coast Guard wise, to help. So that's, that's how we ended up starting out. Now, when I started the fire department in 1990, and I know I'm, I look young, but I did start in 1990, I was 19 years old, I'm 52 now, we had zero fireboats in Lee County, zero. So I was there from the zero all the way, now we have 20. We actually have 20 fireboats in Lee County, mostly because we have 22 fire departments in Lee County and 20 of them board the water. But every department that does run calls on the waterways has a boat, and they just progressively, we went forward and forward and forward. It took, it took probably 20 years, but we're up to that number now. In fact, Lee County is, is highly decorated and recognized throughout the state for one of the robust marine systems because we do do the MERC, the Marine Emergency Response Team Plan, and we coordinate and collaborate very well with law enforcement, Coast Guard. We don't just do our own thing as the fire department, it has to be a group effort, there is no, we're gonna do our thing, they're gonna do their thing. When you do this, you're all in, and that's what, that's what the program is. The program is, doesn't cost anything, the program is working together with your other local government agencies to do the same thing, to go and help that person out there in need. I know I said I was gonna read, but now, now I got off track. Anyway, we, we understand that there, that there is the Coast Guard and FWC and Sheriff's Department, but remember this important thing too, although those organizations are all great and they'll be around forever, they do not offer advanced life support. We, the fire departments, offer advanced life support. We bring that to your front door when you call 911. We will bring that to you on the water, they will bring that to you on the water. We do it in Lee County. So that same treatment, level of care is responding to your needs out on the water, God forbid it should happen. You don't need anyone to show up with a Band-Aid box when you've been hit by a propeller and are bleeding out, they're not gonna be able to help, to help you. So advanced life support is important, and that's what the fire department provides with the fireboats, of course. We also provide fire extinguishment, which no one else can do. And that's a big thing too, because a lot of fire, a lot of boats catch fire out there. You guys have a very healthy environment down here, we don't want a fire, a boat to burn down to the waterline and sink and release all the toxins and the diesel fuel, so getting those fires out on the boats is very important before they get to that point. The other thing is, a lot of areas you cannot access comfortably, or at least realistically, with fire trucks when something's burning on land, like a building. Sometimes you need a boat to come in and attack from the waterside, and what else? And what else is out there? An endless supply of extinguishment water. So that boat can flow water the entire time while the guys from the trucks are coming in from the other side. So it's, it's, it works great in many different aspects that you have to think outside the box of. A fireboat is, is, is wonderful concept in many, many ways. In closing, I'll just say that the multiple meetings and emails that shared information here, then we came down, we had, this is already two years in the making that we've been coming down, talking to local governments, and I mean the Coast Guard, the Sheriff's Department, FWC. Lauren Mello herself has been down here with meetings. We, I've, I've brought leaders from Lee County, Collier County, Marco Island, all to talk to all the other agencies here, including Isla Marada, about the fireboat concept. And, and like Terry said, it's moving forward. It's finally taken place. And I'm glad to see that. And June, I know she's listening right now on Zoom. I know she's delighted to hear that. But let's not stall it now. Let's keep it moving forward. And like I said, I commend Terry for taking the step he did to, to get the boat so that he wasn't left behind. And I don't want to see Isla Marada be left behind, because there's a large area here. So if Monroe County gets their boat and Key Largo gets their boat and you guys don't, there's still a large area, a lot of tourists that come here and it needs to be covered. And let's just end with that last thing, just in case you guys don't know. Florida, of course, is the busiest, most registered boats in the whole state of Florida. There are five busiest counties that have the most registered boats. It's Broward, I'm sorry, it's Miami-Dade, number one, most registered boats. Second is Broward County. Third is Lee County. Fourth, Monroe County. Fifth, Collier County. Of all those counties, the only one who only has two boats versus 15 boats or 10 boats, or in us's case, 20 boats, is Monroe. So you guys have the traffic. And by the way, those are registered vessels of people who live here. That doesn't count your visitors. So there's times of the years that you guys are the busiest in the whole state of Florida with the amount of people out there on the water. So all I ask is support Chief Abel and help bring you guys up to where you should have been years ago. But there's no use dwelling on the past. Let's move forward and do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Thank you, Chief. All right, so we're moving on to Tab 11 now.
No, we got Tab 5 still.
No, no, no. Huh, do we?
Yep. There's one more on the manager attorney.
Oh, okay, that's right. I'm sorry, John.
Manager contract and negotiation. No, no problem. This was just a follow-up from the, the guidance that we got at the last council meeting in terms of revisions to the contract. So bringing that back, obviously, this is a, a starting point in a form. I mean, any professional manager you retain, there will be a negotiation. But this is bringing back based upon the guidance from the last council meeting. There was one item that we discussed, but I wasn't, I wasn't clear as to the exact guidance as to how you wanted to deal with it. And that was, and so I just left it in for discussion purposes. And that's the provision that's in the draft contract as well as the position description about the 40 hours a week spent at Village Hall. There was discussion about whether to have that, whether to have it just 40 hours a week as your role as a manager, or just whether, just to not address it at all. So it wasn't clear to me, so I wanted to just address that tonight also to get, see if I could get clear guidance from the council. Do we want to include that? If so, what language do you want to include with regard to that? Because I know there was discussion about, obviously, the manager spends significant amount of time outside of Village Hall as well.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Henry.
I would say no.
Just don't include it.
That's right.
I agree.
This was the 40 hours.
I agree.
Okay. All right, I can take that out.
I'm sorry. What, um, are you saying, is it, is it that you want to take out the fact that it's a minimum of a 40-hour work week? Or that they have to spend it at Village Hall?
I'll tell you what I'm saying. I said today, whether, if they're in a conference in Orlando or they're in Tallahassee, as long as they're doing 40 hours of work for the village, whether it's via a conference in Washington DC or whether they're in Tallahassee, Orlando, Miami at a conference, they're doing village business. That's what I'm saying. 40 hours for village business, no matter where they, where they are.
What the direction you're giving to John is to take out the fact that they don't have to be in person, but it's a minimum of a 40-hour-a-week work.
They don't have to be in their office in Village Hall.
Up to their own discretion.
So I think the question here is, correct me if I'm wrong, John, is the issue whether they have to be in person at Village Hall? Is that the, the question you have? Or is it to clarify that when you're a village manager, you are participating at a minimum of a 40-hour work week? No matter how you do it, it's 40 hours minimum?
Yeah, so I think there, there were three discussion topics that were just addressed at the last meeting. One was, as it's written, 40 hours in person at Village Hall. Two, you know, 40 hours with your village manager cap on. So do a conducting of village business in your capacity as village manager. And then the third was, that was discussed, was, was just removing any discussion of that at all. So removing Section 1.2 from the contract, and then there's a similar one in the, in the job description. So I just wasn't clear as to which of those three ways the council wanted to go. And again, this is a form, starting point, so we may have input, obviously, from whoever you retain or, or elect to retain. But I just need to get clear guidance from the, from the five of you, or at least the majority of you. Which of those three do you want? Or is there a different alternative that you prefer?
You have an evaluation every six months. If you have problems with these gentlemen not showing up and not doing the job, it speaks for itself. We're, we're dealing with professional people. We're not dealing with high school people, professional people. How many of you did a 40-hour week? I don't think, yeah. I mean, these, these people are, are getting paid well and they have a job to do. I'm, I'm not concerned about it.
I, I've seen people here on Saturdays and Sundays, Elizabeth, over here at Village Hall. Yeah.
And they're driving around town and they're on the phone at home.
I am, I am making an effort to, to create some clarity in direction. That's what, that's my goal here is. You know what? I, I would hope that a village manager would understand that they are working at a minimum of 40 hours. So I'm just trying to get some clarity for John, so we don't have to have this conversation again.
All right, so, so, Kimberly, there was something that you even mentioned today. Would you like to chime in on that?
Um, well, to...
Something about the year term?
Yes. Well, just before I go there, what I would say on Section 1, 1.2. Number one, I definitely agree that, I believe that you should take out the in-person at Village Hall. Because if, number one, if you have a village manager who's sitting in their office for 40 hours a week, you have a serious problem. That is not the job of a village manager to sit in person in their office. Number two, certainly, I, I think 40 hours a week is a bare minimum for anybody, an administrator of any kind, if you feel comfortable leaving that in. But I think if you're hiring somebody, that you have to have that in their contract, that they'll work a minimum of 40 hours. I have to agree with Councilman Rosenthal that I think you have a bigger issue, that you shouldn't have to say that to a professional of that level. But that's my point on that. My recommendation was to put in some, you've had a lot of turnover recently. I think that that's no shock to anybody that I would say that. And to add a level of comfort to ensure that you're getting somebody of the caliber that you would like to get, to add some consistency and stability to the village. My recommendation would be to add some stipulations, potentially a number of years to the contract. A recommendation of maybe perhaps five years. Obviously, if you have somebody who is grossly negligent, you can still vote them out. But I would also recommend perhaps using a supermajority vote to vote that person out. Because then what you're talking about is it's not a political decision. There's not a, a change of the political winds on the council that then affect that person who is professionally doing a good job potentially, but maybe isn't, has a different mindset or, again, is a, a whim of the politics at play. And so a supermajority still protects the council from anybody who's grossly negligent or engaging in behavior that you're not comfortable with. You're still able to remove them, but give some stability to the person that you've selected as a council, even if the people in the chairs change. Just a couple of suggestions.
And just as a, one point on the supermajority, if that's something that is potentially interest to the council, I would need to look into that, because your charter does say that the, your charter officers shall be removed only by a majority vote of the full council. What they're getting at is it has to be at least three. You can't have, you know, two people absent and, and two people remove that. So I just need to, just to confirm that we could put basically a stricter requirement on, which I, I don't want to guess, but I, you know, that's how I would look at it. Can we, can we be more strict than the charter? I don't think, you know, are we violating it? I just would want to make sure that we are not. So I don't think, you know, that's not a decision necessarily for today. But if it's something that the council is interested in considering, I, I will look into that just to confirm that that's something that, that you do have the power to do and you wouldn't be in violation of the charter by, by making it a supermajority instead of majority of the full council.
So Counsel, how do we feel about that, having John looking?
I, I like that. I like looking into that because I think it helps to neutralize a potential manager's concerns that we have a two-year terms on the council and they could get hired in the middle of the two-year period. And then a year later, the entire council rolls over and he, he or she has five new bosses to deal with. That, that does bring stability and I think that translates into the staff as well, that they will know that they're gonna have a manager that can be here a, a longer duration. And that will, I think, show through with better performance and organization and stability, all that fun stuff that we talk about. I think it's a good suggestion and I'd like to see if that's something that's legally viable. I'm interested in that. And, and so, what was the other thing you mentioned? Sorry, slate?
I recommended five years.
Yes.
Or a, a lengthier timeframe, so that, again, you build that stability in place. I look at it a little bit like a strategic plan. So in government, a strategic plan's ideal would be for five years because you build that continuity. So with the history of the sort of revolving door that we've had a bit, you build a framework where someone can feel confident, that the staff can feel confident and that that person can create a continuity and a consistency within the village. But yet, with, again, if it's possible through the charter with a supermajority, you still have the ability as a council to remove somebody who's not doing their job, but is not at the same time necessarily, if you were, as you mentioned, every two years, if you were to have a massive turnover of the council, they're not at the whim of the political winds.
So, so by bringing this kind of element into the conversation right now, it seems like that kind of change to a job description would take, take quite a bit of time. You'd have to do your research, you'd have to come back. And I'm, I, I don't want that, this good conversation, which is worthy to have, to interrupt our hiring process, which we are just about ready to go into. We're interviewing people, that's just next week, actually. And then we made a commitment to hire someone, locate and hire someone on the 22nd. And let me ask you, John, is this something that could be negotiated individually? Could applicants request that kind of within their, within their contract individually?
Yeah, and I, I don't think me looking into this should delay or would need to delay your, your process of hiring somebody at all, absolutely.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you, John.
And just to go back to the 40 hours, I didn't get clarification on that. It sounded like everybody was, was good with, with not having it be 40 hours at Village Hall, but...
In person at Village Hall.
Do you want it, do you want it addressed in there at all? Or do you want it just to say the expectation is you will work a minimum of 40 hours in your capacity as village manager? Something along those lines?
That's fine.
I, I'd just like to leave it out altogether. I think a professional at that level understands it's, it's, it's a full-time plus job. And if they don't, we shouldn't have them.
Okay, and I know, Henry, that he, Henry, you said the same thing. Is anybody else, any disagreement with that?
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
It's fine to leave it out.
All right. Perfect, thank you.
So are we done with that?
Yes.
Yep. Then we can move on to 11 now.
Tab 11, Jennifer.
This would be an appropriate time to, any other, any, are we, any other concerns about next week and the fund that that will be?
I'm looking forward to it.
Great, me too.
Oh, yeah, we made some changes. I forgot what they were.
And also, I don't see that on the 22nd, which is that Monday, I don't see an agenda published. I mean, I'm assuming that's been noticed? Is that, do we know? Is that Marnie? Do you know if that meeting on the, I mean, that has to be noticed, right?
Yes, it is.
But, but what's the agenda? What was the notice? I mean, it's not on the, it's not on the website.
I don't know what it is yet.
Well, how was it noticed? If it, don't you have to notice the agenda?
We do a public notice.
Okay, sorry.
That it is occurring, but as far as the agenda, that hasn't been set yet.
Okay.
I, I have not seen an agenda for that meeting, but I will definitely get with Evie tomorrow and we will figure out where we're at on that and we will let Counsel know.
Can you have the schedule? Because I think it's not 100% correct what Evie has, is what we've talked about. So maybe Thursday, we can have the schedule of...
Absolutely, we will revisit that.
Okay.
All right. Okay, so now we can move on then. We got it with John? We finished with that?
Yep.
Okay. All right. So now, Jennifer, let's move on to Tab 11 with Daniel.
And Tab 11 is, is, it was moved ahead of the consent agenda. This is a resolution. It's a resolution of the Village Council of Isla Marada, Village of Islands, Florida, confirming an inventory list of all real property within its jurisdiction to which the municipality or any special dependent district within its boundaries holds fee simple title, which is appropriate for use as affordable housing pursuant to Florida Statute, Section 166.0451, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. As the council may remember on its, at its meeting on November 9th, 2003, we presented the list that's in your packet of, that's required under the Live Local Act to provide on our website a list of properties that are appropriate for affordable housing. At that time, the council had concerns about some of the properties and their habitat classifications and they asked that staff go ahead and look at the different properties and do some sort of analysis regarding that. So we tasked Daniel Parabok with doing that and he's provided that information to you. Daniel's here today. He can do a little presentation or answer questions, however the council wants to address that. And then we can go ahead and discuss how the council would like to proceed with the list. While Daniel is speaking, I'm also gonna hand out, it's the same list you have, but we added a column with the habitat, preliminary habitat classification and ranked, and grouped them together. So all the ones with the same classifications are together, so you can see the easy. So it's gonna be in a different order than the, the report that Daniel did, but they're all there. So I'll just hand that out. And Daniel, if you want to go.
Good evening, Counsel. I don't necessarily have a presentation. I'll just kind of give you a brief description of how I got the report. So I tried to put the best disclaimer I could on the front page. So these results are not an actual HEI. This is not an official classification. I did not do a full vegetation survey. This is just a preliminary result based on one field inspection per site. I went to all the sites. I, before I went there, I did desktop research to see if the village had any of the sites mapped habitat. I took a screenshot of it and added to the report of what type of habitat was mapped and if it had any, or if it didn't have any classification. And then I did a field visit for each site. I basically did a transect to each site. I walked to the center, kind of took a look around. I tried to take a representative photo of the habitat of each lot that had habitat or a general perspective view from the street on the lots that did not have any habitat. And then I, based on, you know, the HEI criteria loosely, I looked at the patch sizes around... And then I, based on, you know, the HEI criteria loosely, I looked at the patch sizes around each lot, if it had hammock and the prevalence of invasive species. And those are kind of the two biggest factors of an HEI and kind of summarized what the, an HEI score would probably be. And that is how I got that. In some lots, there was only a couple, I think, that were mapped as, mapped as hammock that I didn't think met the criteria for hammock and they got downgraded to, I think, either disturbed with hammock or disturbed. But I think that only occurred once or twice. And that's how I got the report. And I'm happy to answer any questions about a specific lot or methodologies or anything else you have.
Counsel, any questions for Daniel?
I just have one comment. As far as your photos go, if you did some aerial shots that you can get from the property appraiser, it's another view to consider, just as a suggestion.
Okay.
Okay? Because when you're looking down on something, you get a different perspective between the good and the bad and how much this is or how much that is. When you come from this direction, you're only going to get that one shot. If I explained it, hopefully I did. Okay?
Understood.
Just, just a recommendation, that's all. Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions for Daniel?
Well, just for Daniel or just comments about the issue?
No comments, whatever.
So I spoke with you a little bit earlier today, Jennifer, and thank you for this work. This is helpful. Yeah, I wonder if, how, if there is a, if it would be difficult or appropriate, it would it be appropriate to ask your office to cull this list depending, considering the appropriate, the appropriateness of affordable, the development of affordable housing on these particular units without my researching them for size and really going over this with a fine tooth comb? You know, the way I look at this is it's, I'm very happy to have this habitat explanation, but I do, am I right in understanding that these could all actually be improved to create high hammock, right?
Not necessarily.
So, so, so if something is disturbed with hammock, it could not be, in any way be improved to, to elevate its, its
The answer to that's complicated. It can be, a level of restoration can occur, but based on other factors, especially the size of the surrounding hammock, if, if there is any, that would bump it up or down.
Okay. I can imagine how far, how complicated the rest of that answer is, but I wonder if there's a way we can look at this beyond simply hammock, which is important to all of us, but I think that that's, I would ask if you could do that.
Sure, if, if that's the guidance of the consensus of the council, that's certainly something my department can do. I would ask though, that we have some parameters as far as like what the council would be looking for, for appropriateness for affordable housing. Like, like we did this list, but we're not, still not sure, are you interested in removing everything that has hammock on it or do you want some things that have low quality hammock? So I'm just wanting to make sure that we understand what the council is looking for because my fear would be that we would do all that work, which I'm happy to do, and then come back to you and say two, three months. And then again, you'd be like, okay, well, I don't understand this and I want you to do some more work. You know what I'm saying? So I just want to, I'm happy to do it. I just would like to do it one more time and come back to you with a complete list that, that you guys can make a decision on, if that makes sense.
So if I'm understanding, what you're requesting from council is, and just to be clear, so more parameters of what they are, what they would consider to be the criteria for the affordable housing that they're looking for, for you to prioritize the list?
Right. I, I can provide some priorities and some parameters as well, but if there's some things that are specific that the council has directives for me, I'm hap, I would like to have those as well.
Okay.
That's kind of what I'm asking, if that makes sense.
I'd like to ask a question of Daniel. So Daniel, I think this kind of conversation probably came up in a recent appeal that we had on the property located on the airstrip. And it has to do with how you determine whether or not a property that has some hammock on it is disturbed versus low quality. And I, I think I kind of know the answer, but I'd like to have more of a layperson explanation. So let's say we have a 10,000 square foot lot and you've, it made in your preliminary, I think you said desktop research, I like that phrase, and site visit, that it's disturbed with hammock. Does that mean that the majority of the lot is disturbed, but it has some smaller component of hammock? Or, I mean, I mean, trying to get a feel for the disturbance quality or quantity. So I think I saw a photo in one of theirs where you took a picture of a lot and the whole front of it and inside of it was coral, you know, exposed cap rock and fill. And you see some bushes and trees in the back. That's disturbed with hammock, just, you know, superficially seeing that. That, that I could see more probably would be suitable for affordable housing, but is disturbed with hammock, you know, like just a little parking spot that somebody's carved out and then the rest of it is jungle? Give me, give me a feel of the, of the two different types of, I don't think disturbed is a habitat, but two different types of eco tones or whatever phrase you use to describe that.
Right, so the, the least sensitive would be disturbed. And we've, there's lots that are mapped disturbed, so we kind of, I've got dealt with that and have to assume that they were mapped somewhat correctly when I look at lots that were disturbed that haven't changed since the, the maps were drawn. But in my professional opinion, a disturbed lot would be a lot that's not scarified, but has some sort of native vegetation, but not necessarily a protected habitat. And disturbed with hammock would be a lot that has native vegetation, but also has vegetation diversity that would also occur in a hammock, but not in the density or layout of a hammock. And there might also be the presence of landscaping or non-native exotic species. And then specifically the one lot that I downgraded to disturbed with hammock, the entire center of the lot was cleared. There was an exorbitant amount of exotic vegetation and there was only less than a handful of native canopy trees and there was very, very little understory. It was right on the edge of disturbed with hammock or disturbed, but because the presence of the understory species, I, I feel that disturbed with hammock was a correct classification.
Do you think that in general, a lot that's, you classify as disturbed with hammock has potential for being restored? Does that depend on each lot maybe, or?
I think a scarified lot could be restored to hammock with the right effort.
Good answer. All right. I don't have any other questions at this time.
I have a question. How hard would it be? Because I'm looking down this list and most of them are low quality hammock and I, I sort of see that, is there a way maybe to go back and rank them, one, two and three in each of these, that one would be the worst low quality or three would be the worst so that we can make a decision? Because they all say low quality just about, you know? Is there a way to rank them so we know, without us going out on the property and stuff, that we would know, okay, this one is definitely, should go to affordable, this one has a potential of becoming conservation or something? I don't know. Does that make sense? One of them?
It does. I think if, if that's the route that, or the information that, that we'd need, you would need to, in order to rank them, I think a, a full HEI for each lot that the village is considering or on the list would be probably the best route to go.
Because you're the expert and I'd like for you to come back and say, this one, this one and this one, definitely. I mean, for me to look at this and they say low quality hammock, it goes and out the door, you know? I don't know. But you may be able to narrow this list down to rate them for second and third, you know, and say, these three definitely should be the first ones.
In terms of habitat, I could give an HEI score, which is zero to 100.
Would that be hard for you to do? I mean, I don't want to
No, it's a little time consuming, but I'm more than happy to do it.
So you've got plenty of time.
No. I have no, I have no problem doing that if that's what you
Well, is that, does everybody else understand what I'm asking for?
I, I do.
Okay.
You mentioned that this list was generated because of that airstream issue, but that, is that what you said?
No, no, I said that, that some of the things I wanted to talk about were also discussed during that appeal. I want to, excuse me for just jumping back. I think it's important to understand that just because it has the, the phrase, the label of low quality hammock, that doesn't mean that it's, my word, a crappy piece of property or a crappy hammock or, you know, substandard or anything like that. It means that one of the criteria, Daniel, if you could confirm, is that, is the size of it. In other words, a, a small lot can have a beautiful, can be covered with beautiful hammock trees, but because of its smaller size, it has a lower rating as a low quality hammock, whereas a larger piece that looks exactly the same would be considered a high quality. Because we put value on the size of the hammock. But the quality of the trees is the same, I would say, as far as beautiful, pristine, natives, not too many invasives and so forth. Okay?
Correct. And in this, during the, the field surveys, a lot of the, the median lots, the median lots in the, on this list there between US1 and Old Highway, if they had some disturbance or exotic vegetation, I tried to add just a quick line in the report. But most of those, the, the hammock looks great and there's very little invasives, not, not a lot of signs of disturbance. Some of them didn't, but because of their size or there's no connectivity to a different habitat or larger hammock section than their low quality. Even though, just like you said, the, if you were to look at it and then look at a bigger piece that looked exactly the same, you wouldn't be able to tell the two apart.
Right. So
So I'm confused, so where's that name?
So what, what it means is, well, I, I just, I'll begin my speech. So it's been the policy of the village to discourage, you know, people want to build and affordable housing is something we need, so there's been cases where people would like say, well, you know, we have hammock, we can build it in the hammock. And it's been the policy of the village that if we have to choose between two things that we need, hammock versus affordable housing, hammock wins for protection. We don't normally do that.
Well, that's why I asked you to rate it.
Yes. But the rating, as I was mentioning, the rating has to do with the size of the patch. And that's a different thing than the quality, the aesthetic beauty of, is that redundant? The aesthetic quality of what you're looking at when you, when you drive down the street.
I want to mix it all together and look at everything.
Well, I, I'm just, I'm just suggesting that we on this council and the ones prior have placed a high value on protecting and discouraging development. We've tried to steer development towards disturbed and scarified properties and away from hammock properties. The, now the Department of Commerce has voiced their concerns whenever it has been, where we've approved something that has hammock that gets cleared, you know, that, that's protected, that's mentioned in the, I think it's in the, the Principles for Guiding Development or one of those other state things that we have to preserve tropical hardwood hammocks. And so I think it's important when we evaluate an applicant's appeal or an application to do something, we hold ourselves to the same standard. We walk the talk, we walk the walk and talk the talk. So I, I say that with the final, like my conclusion is, anything that has high, low or medium hammock rating is unsuitable for, no matter how big or little it is, it's unsuitable for an affordable housing or for any development and should probably be rezoned as conservation long-term and have a conservation easement placed on it to prevent that from being disrupted after we're gone. Disturbed with hammock, I think that's probably something on a lot-by-lot basis to look at. I mean, it's hard, I mean, there's, there's some that can be restored. I think Daniel said even a scarified lot can be restored, but maybe that's one that I could feel comfortable about saying, okay, you could put an affordable unit there. We have a provision in our code where when someone does a development and they have to clear habitat, native habitat, and they, they're unable to replace that with trees on the same site, they contribute to a fund to, for, for mitigation and we have money from that that could be used to mitigate the disturbance on some of these lots if we really want to carry our green theme forward. Hammocks are green infrastructure that serve everybody in the community and in the, on earth in general. Obviously, I'm a fan of that and I would like to see that move forward. Others maybe see it differently and I respect that, but just, just glancing at this, I see five lots that I would feel comfortable putting on the affordable house list, list. That's the first five. The, the next three that are disturbed with hammock, maybe, but I'd have to look at them and the rest, forget it. I, I wouldn't do that at all. That's my opinion. I'm done speaking. Thank you. Yes.
Jennifer, you have anything else you would like to say?
No, I just need, I have what Mark Gregg would like, I have what Elizabeth Jolene would like, I just would need consensus one way or the other from everybody. So if I can hear from everybody else, that would be great.
So can I, can I ask this in a broad, to, to kind of move the conversation? Really what, what I think I heard you say is, are we comfortable with taking the majority of these, anything with its, that's disturbed or low quality hammock? Can we take those off? Those would be, those would remain in, in hammock status and we could further down the road, talk about conservation easements. And then ask Jennifer to look at the top five and see, I mean, I, I don't personally know where all of these are. Does it even make sense? Are they large enough for any kind of building, et cetera? Is, is that what I'm hearing the question really is? Are we comfortable taking off the majority of these properties because of the hammock designation?
I don't know. I, I kind of like the vice mayor's thing where we get Daniel to rank them. You know, one, two, three, which, you know, which one of these?
I just would point out, in our code, we have three classes of habitat. Class one, class two, class three. Class one are all undisturbed. Mangrove, salt marsh, well, disturbed wetlands is in there, but it's a wetland. High quality hammock, moderate and low quality or beach berm. So those are the ones where I think you have a 90% open space ratio, 10% clearing allowance. Class two is disturbed, beach berm, disturbed salt marsh and wetlands and disturbed with hammock. Those, any of those, if you apply for BPAS and you clear that, you get negative points. The only ones that don't get negative points are disturbed and disturbed with exotics and of course, scarified. So that's class three. Class three, I'm fine with that if you want to do affordable housing on it, the rest.
Okay, so what is low quality hammock, Mark?
Low quality hammock is class one, protect, the highest protection. So high, low and, and high, moderate and low quality hammock are all considered class one that have the highest level of protection. Class two is secondary and that's disturbed with beach berm, disturbed with salt marsh and disturbed with hammock. And then finally disturbed and scarified.
So my question to you is, okay, the Machado property.
Mm-hmm.
So when it was purchased from the guy, it was talked about for affordable housing. Now you're saying to take it off and leave it as hammock, which I'm fine with because it's in my neighborhood, but you know, is that what you're saying?
It has some hammock, one of the lots, the center lot that has, I saw Susan Sprunt's analysis of that, it has some hammock on it. I think it's a minority amount of the square footage on the property and it has a lot of exotics on it. So, I mean, that's one we could look at and evaluate, but the, there's another one there I think is loaded with hammock.
Yeah, the one on the north.
Yeah, that one. That one's going to be a tough one for anyone to deal with.
I agree.
And then the ones south are scarified.
I'm just trying to get a feel for what you're talking about when you say
Yeah, I think those are really good examples. The one further south is I think
It's wide open.
Clear cut. The one to the north has a little hammock patch on it. The waterfront one is got a significant amount or
Well, that's what I meant by ranking them.
Yeah.
These four that are on key heights would not be ranked the same number if we went with, you know, the one, two, three. So that's
Asking us, but, but by ranking and then, I don't know, taking the top 20, it's asking us to, to re
I'm not going to take the top 20.
It's asking us to redefine what it is that is, that you just read, you know? By, by, by saying, yeah, let's build on these hammock properties, I mean, it's, it's going, I'm kind of wondering why it is that we're even being asked this because
The law requires it, state law.
So, so then let's take the top four that are none and disturbed. You know what I mean? So, but, so maybe you can help me with that, Jennifer. Actually, it doesn't even matter, never mind, never mind. I would just go with your suggestion of taking off these that are, that are listed with hammock and the ones that are clearly not, sure.
Well, I mean, if it's disturbed, you, you can, you have, you know, the choices, yes, we think we can justify building on it Yes, we think we can justify building on it, or no, it's disturbed, let's undisturb it. Let's put something back there because we have a fund that's dedicated for that exact purpose. It's our property. Why not make it nice again?
The truth of the conversation is that we should be looking at, like, buildings, like, commercial buildings that have the ability to put affordable on top, like my building. If, you know, did something like that, then we could let the low-quality grow back to high-quality. So I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just trying to get a feel for what these all look like, like the Machado that I see all the time. And one of it's really good hammock and the other isn't. So I was just trying to.
On Monroe Street, it's all.
Yeah, it is all hammock. Yes. Yes, so I agree. We should be looking towards putting affordables on top of existing structures. That's what I think.
Daniel, explain this to me because affordable use, and I see these are all, you know, you have this one, Vacation Village, okay, is affordable. Disturbed with hammock, okay, that's another disturbed. That's, but low-quality that say even affordables.
I think Jennifer can.
Yeah, I can explain that. So the column affordable use means that the lot was, the zoning allows for affordable use there? That's what that? That doesn't mean you have to. It just means the zoning was allowed.
So these lots that people give, I thought they all go into conservation. When they donate.
It depends on what it's donated for.
Okay. I thought those lots are going to become green space.
Lots that were donated under the lot dedication for BPAS, those go into conservation, yes.
That's what I thought. Okay.
So we could give the direction to take, to look at the top four and put those on your list. Sorry, you could, we could give that direction. The list is the top four.
I'm okay with the top four. That seems easy enough.
Four or five? Are you including disturbed or not?
I'm hearing you say that a disturbed lot could be regenerated into a hammock lot.
If it's disturbed, what's the difference between disturbed and disturbed with hammock? Could you say that again? Like number five?
My first time explanation was so good. And I don't think I can duplicate that. No, so disturbed would be one step above scarified. So it could have some native vegetation. It could be landscaped.
I remember, I remember, I remember. Thank you.
So Daniel, what's your opinion on this list right here? So would it be, you got the first three, first four say none, then you got disturbed and disturbed with hammock? Are the disturbed with hammocks, is that, are those buildable? Or are those need to go in conservation?
That's not, that's not a call that I can make. But the disturbed with hammock has a larger clearing ratio. So disturbed with hammock, I think you're allowed 70% clearing. So, and then when you go to low-quality, now you're 50%.
Okay. So Jennifer, what do you, help me understand again what you're looking for.
I'm just looking for some guidance from the council on, so we have to, we were supposed to post this list to our website by October 1st of last year. We didn't meet that deadline, so just trying to get this, you know, accomplished as soon as we possibly can. You know, I don't know that we're in any more danger of anything the longer we wait, but I still would like to get it up as soon as possible. So I just been looking for some guidance from the council as far as which lots to include on the list, as far as, the statute does not define what is appropriate, or is it appropriate, where is appropriate, I believe, appropriate, affordable, for affordable housing. So when I first did the list, I interpreted that as zoning. And when I brought that back to you, you wanted more information on the hammock and the habitat and all of that. So now I want to know, is that enough information? Which of these lots do you feel is appropriate? Or do you need more information? And what is that information? Do you want me to have our newly hired engineer take a look at some of these lots and determine, you know, if they could be developed and how that would look and what that looks like? Or is there some other criteria you're looking for? I mean, we can certainly look at them from the criteria of, you know, setbacks and lot size and all of the things in our zoning, you know. But if there's other criteria, like if you say to me, like, well, we don't want any affordable housing in Upper Matacombe, well, that takes out one of the lots right there. Do you know what I'm saying? I'm not saying that's what you'll say, but those are the kinds of things I just need to know.
Okay.
Let's take the top four for now.
I'm in agreement with that.
I'm comfortable.
Otherwise, it's eight, with disturbed hammock, the ones.
How do we go about looking at putting affordables on some of the existing buildings? Oh, well, I know it is, but I'm just saying that would do the number count. But that would change my number count. I would go for eight then. But that's, but never mind.
I'd go for eight, too. I'd say the eight, take the top eight. Because I just heard Daniel say you can build on 70% disturbed with hammock, right? Okay, there you go.
But just because we can doesn't mean we want to.
I didn't say that we wanted to. I'm just saying that we all have different opinions, Elizabeth.
Yeah.
And I have a different opinion here. But, I mean, the village, what is the village going to do with it? Are we going to build affordable housing, or?
I don't, that's not the intention of this list. The intention of this list is we're required by the state to post this list for, you know, if anybody's out there looking to see what the village might have to offer, if they're interested in a long-term lease with the village, they could approach us. If they're interested in purchasing the land for affordable housing, they could approach us, and they would have an idea of what we have available. This is not to encourage any development on these lots or that we were intending to develop on any of these lots.
The top four? I think we're, that's one thing, it's pretty.
I think I'm hearing consensus of the top four.
Why don't we start with that?
Are you okay with the four? Or do you want to go to eight?
Do four.
So is the consensus that we're approving the top four for the list? Or you want me to come back with further analysis on the top four?
I'm good with four.
Just the top four on the list? Okay, thank you very much.
So if it's going to be an approval of the list with the top four, we will need to have public comment on it, and then obviously a motion and a second.
Okay. Thank you, Daniel. All right, public comments open? Any public comment?
Van has signed up for this one.
Van, you want to come on?
I'd just like to say that I'm Van Cadenhead. I'm very happy that you have refined this list from the first list we got. And I'm glad that you gave her a number of four. So that's a place to start. So thank you very much. And I think this search for property is going in the proper direction. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Van. Anybody else? Go ahead, Sue.
I was a little confused because the agenda doesn't have the same list that you have. So when I look at it, in your agenda for Thursday, if I'm not mistaken, there's an ordinance that, to deal with the 300 affordable housing units, which are what we're going to be dealing with, the allocations that we have. And in that ordinance, it says that the only development will be duplex or more per lot. And these are often R1 lots that don't allow duplexes. And so I don't know whether you should take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Okay, any other public comment, Marnie?
No, sir.
Okay, all right, public comments now closed then. Okay. So council, any further discussion? Kimberly, did you, you were saying something?
No, no, I was just mentioning that the 300 is on the Thursday agenda, but it's a different item and a different issue than what we're talking about here.
All right, so if we have no further conversation, do I hear a motion to approve?
So I would ask that if there's a motion to approve to just list the four, that it would be a motion to approve the list as amended to only include the following four properties listed by, list three by address, and one does not have an address, so I'll do the parcel ID. It's vacant land address with a parcel ID 00418030-000000. And then the property's located at 180 Bougainvillea Street, 81981 Overseas Highway, and 172 Bougainvillea Street.
Okay, all right. So do I hear a motion?
I move we approve the four lots that, do you want me to read them?
No, I think you can just, yeah.
The first four that's on the list that I'm holding in my hand that we got earlier tonight, that John just described a minute ago, which one doesn't have an address. I move that we add those to the list.
Do I hear a second?
You got it.
All right, so Mr. Councilman Gregg made the motion, and Councilman Rosenthal seconded. Marnie, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Mark Gregg?
Yes.
Councilmember Henry Rosenthal?
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolene?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney?
Yes.
And Mayor Buddy Pender?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, so now we are on tab six.
We're into the consent agenda now. So these are items that are of a routine nature, and council members have reviewed these items in advance and sought the advice of staff as they felt necessary. There'll be one vote on the consent items, which today are tabs six through nine. If anyone would like to pull an item from consent, he or she should state so now. I apologize, the consent is tab six through 10. Thank you.
Six through 10? Okay. All right, so do I hear anybody want to pull anything? Are we good to? Move on?
If there's no, we have a vote.
Public comment? Hey, can we have public comment?
Yes.
Okay, anybody wants to speak on the consent agenda? Any public comment, Marnie?
I don't have anyone signed up for it.
Okay, all right, public comments now closed.
Move for approval.
Second? Somebody got a sec? I hear a second? Okay, go ahead, Elizabeth? Okay, Marnie, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Mark Gregg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney?
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolene?
Yes.
Councilmember Henry Rosenthal?
Yes.
And Mayor Buddy Pender?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
So we are on to tab 12 now, which is a resolution of the Village Council of Isle of Marne, Village of Islands, Florida, approving the purchase of four new 2024 Chevrolet 2500 HD trucks for the Village Public Works Department from Allen J. Fleet Sales by piggybacking the City of Tallahassee contract number 5179, authorizing disposal of assets through auction on govdeals.com, authorizing the village manager to execute necessary documents, authorizing the village manager to expend budgeted funds, and providing for an effective date.
Good evening. So we're looking at purchasing four new trucks for Public Works. When we go through the vehicle purchasing, we look and analyze at your guys' direction. We look to see if we could utilize any electric vehicles, capabilities, or anything of that nature. We look at the positions and the uses of the trucks, and what departments will use them, looking at all of those factors. We chose these trucks, sorry. We chose these trucks. They're four-by-four crew cab trucks. They're heavy-duty trucks. The Public Works needs them to tow a minimum 14,000 pounds. They're, we tow a lot of heavy equipment and use them all weekly. But these trucks, we are piggybacking off of the City of Tallahassee. They already pre-ordered these trucks and decided to reduce the amount of trucks that they were actually ordering. So they're already ordered and available. And we're looking at trying to pick them up quickly.
Are they duallys or they just?
They're just regular four-by-four crew cab, long bed, single-wheel, rear-wheel. No, they're gas. They are gas. I do have a mix of both gas and diesel in our fleet, just for purposes during emergencies, whether we have one fuel or the other. So we do factor that in when we purchase vehicles. It's been difficult since COVID purchasing vehicles, so getting on a list is very hard. This one came available in December, so I've been working to try to make this purchase. But the cost of the purchase for all four vehicles is $197,824. And that's just under $50,000 per vehicle. The vehicles that we're replacing are sheriff vehicles that are used by the Sheriff's Department for five years, and they're handed down to us. We use them for the rest of their lives. We kind of run them into the ground. Some of the vehicles we're replacing, two of them are 18 years old. One is 16, and the other one's 13 years old. But, yeah, we use them till they become very costly to repair, and then auction those vehicles off. So also, and this resolution is approving to auction those four vehicles upon receiving the new vehicles. But if you have any questions, I'm here to answer anything.
Council, any questions for AJ?
I don't have any questions. I fully support what he's asking to do. I had a great conversation with Kimberly today. I was about to launch into my speech about buying electric vehicles when she reminded me that, you know, the heavy-duty ones are not available, and that what AJ does is vital during a hurricane and after a hurricane, and that they need the heavier trucks to deal with that, so.
Tow with.
To tow, to tow with that. And did you say four-wheel drive also?
Yes, they are.
Yeah, so, and then having shopped around a little bit for vehicles, that's a tremendous price for a vehicle with those features. So I couldn't say no to that. But, so I will obviously support that. But what I would like to do is take this opportunity for us to begin a conversation. When we purchase vehicles or even equipment, that we first give consideration to what's coming in the future, which is electric, an EV. And, you know, these, this is not the prime time. They're not ready for prime time to do what AJ wants to do. But for sedans and for other lighter duty and lighter-use ones, I think it is prime time. I do know that the building official has recently made an inquiry about obtaining a new vehicle for what she does, and I think that this would be an excellent opportunity to start with her if she hasn't already made a decision to shop around for an EV that suits the demands of her space, her office, and her duties. But I think it's also important to not only consider just the purchase price, that's only a part of the story, especially with an EV. You look at the lifetime cost of the vehicle. And driving on electricity is a whole lot cheaper than driving on petroleum. And the repair costs, the only thing that wears out on an EV are the tires, the windshield wipers, and the brakes. And I think that's about it. So that's really all that they, you know, once they get all the bugs out of them, that's all they have to worry about.
Because they don't have any battery problems.
It's a bat, well, that, you know, the newer ones, you know, the ones that haven't been tried and true, maybe, but some of the older ones, that's getting worked out. The technology is advancing rapidly. The costs are coming down. This is the trend of the future. There's a very large electric car company that is seeking a battery, to construct a battery station in the village. I'm not going to say anymore about it because I don't want to jinx it. But this is the wave of the future, and we're a tourist community, and lots of tourists like EVs, and they're driving them here. So that, I just want us to be leaders in this area, and to lead by example by showing, we're going to jump on board as early adopters to take on the EVs that will serve the future for us in the best way possible, so.
Are you making, are you making a motion to approve this for truck purchase, but with the provision that we create a policy to, a purchasing policy for the additional vehicles in the EV?
Well, yes and no. I mean, I don't want to, I want to, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase as is, but.
We need to have public comment.
Yeah, I will. Okay, we'll get to that. But I don't want to muddy up his presentation with my rant about EVs and all that. I don't want to mix that up.
I want to, I want to say yes. Can we, can we give direct, where can we start this? Like, give direction to come with a policy?
We can give direction, but firstly, my interest in EVs notwithstanding, we haven't properly noticed that, so I don't know that it's right for us to make a decision and vote on that tonight. But certainly, we can give direction to the staff to pursue this with a green policy going forward. Anything we buy with a motor needs to be compared to an electric and a gas model. Yeah.
So, Mark, number one, we're not, you're not going to buy an EV truck with that much horsepower, towing capacity for 50 grand. I can tell you that right now.
No way, 150 grand.
Yeah, you're not, you know, I've looked at them because I wanted to buy the Ford that was, you know, it's a rolling generator, you know, seriously. But you know what? I couldn't even get it. I couldn't even get it. And then the price was over the roof, so anyways.
But for our needs, it's not ready. We're not ready for that.
Okay, so Kimberly, you had something you want to say?
Mayor, if it's of assistance in this conversation, so that we can move it forward.
Yes.
I did have a conversation, after multiple conversations with multiple council people, I know that this is on all of your radar and it is of interest to multiple of you. I did have a conversation with Maria. It is on the staff radar and indeed, it is already the intention of staff to add language to the fixed asset policy and procurement, procurement policy and then bring that to you, that we will utilize or analyze and consider EV as a priority moving forward, especially when it's appropriate for passenger vehicles as part of our fleet, et cetera. So we'll be bringing that forward.
Inspectors or building officials, whatever, whoever, man.
Absolutely. So that's already on our radar and we'll be bringing that forward.
Right, so if, Council, can we go ahead and have public comment on this item? Okay. All right, any public comment, Marnie?
No, sir.
Okay, no public comment.
I move for approval.
Now closed, Mark?
I second that.
All right, so Marnie, we got a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Mark Gregg.
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolyn.
Yes.
Councilmember Henry Rosenthal.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney.
Yes.
And Mayor Buddy Pender.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, tab 13, you took care of that earlier, right?
Yep.
Kimberly, okay. So we're on to tab 14?
Yeah, tab 14 is an ordinance on second reading. It's an ordinance of Isle of Marauda, Village of Islands, Florida, amending Chapter 66 Waterways, Article 1 in general, Section 66-2, Operation of Vessels in Restricted Areas of the Village Code to modify the vessel exclusion zone slash swim area, generally located off Port Antigua and White Marlin Beach on Lower Matacomby Key, as further described in Exhibit A, providing for separability, providing for inclusion in the code and providing for an effective date.
All right, Peter.
Good evening, Council. So yes, this is the second reading of an ordinance to amend the village's vessel exclusion zone shown here on this map. What we're showing here, this is the current configuration of the zone. Notice there's an approximately 350-foot-wide section that was excluded from the zone originally on the southern side. That was to allow access to those private property owners that had docks, boating access into those docks. The amendment, I'm going to have Frank change the slide there. Just keep your eye on the map. Notice that excluded zone. This amendment quite simply is shrinking that excluding, excluded zone down to an approximately 25-foot-wide channel. Still allows the access, boating access into those private property owners' docks. The public seems to be fully on board with this. The residents there are fully on board with this. I haven't had anything but positive response from this. Law enforcement's on board. At its December 14th meeting, Council heard this on first reading, passed it five to zero. There have been no changes to this amendment since that time and staff is recommending adoption and passage of this amendment to the ordinance on second reading here.
Thank you, Peter. Any public comment, Marnie?
Yes, Van has signed up for this.
Van Kadenhead, from a personal point of view, I'd just like to thank you all for bearing with this problem and that looks like the exact solution that the people want. So I don't think there's anybody from White Marlin Beach here tonight, but from somebody who used to party on White Marlin Beach, I'd like to thank you all for making it easier to enjoy living there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Van. Any other public comment, Marnie?
No one else.
Okay, all right, public comment's now closed. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Henry's made a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
All right, Marnie, call the roll, please.
Just to be clear, it was a motion to approve, just to clarify.
Yeah, yeah.
Motion to approve. Make sure the record's clear.
Okay. It's getting late, John.
Councilmember Henry Rosenthal.
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolyn. Councilmember Mark Gregg.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney.
Yes.
And Mayor Buddy Pender.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, tab 15, John.
Tab 15 is also an ordinance on second reading. This is an ordinance of Isle of Marauda, Village of Islands, Florida, calling for a referendum vote to be held with the regular village election on November 5th, 2024, providing for submission to the electors of proposed amendments to the village charter pertaining to term limits, providing for placement on the ballot, providing for requisite ballot language, providing for notice of election, providing for authorization of village clerk and for village canvassing board, providing for separability, providing for inclusion in the charter slash conformity of amendment and providing for an effective date. This is the second reading of an item that we've talked about a number of times. This brings back the change that the council voted on and directed last time, which was just to have a simple proposed charter change that strikes one word that currently is in the charter, which is consecutive, so that the proposed term would now read that no council member shall serve more than eight years in office. And then it puts a ballot language question on there that explains that, that it changed the amendment from eight-year consecutive limit to eight-year term limit, whether consecutive or not.
Okay, Council, everybody.
I have a question. I went back and watched the video because there was a bit of, a little bit of confusion at the end. I mean, we were all kind of in harmony about where we wanted to go with this, but the actual motion that was made, and I was the one that made it, was to, on the prior version of this, was to remove the word "retroactive." And I think that the effect of this, you know, was to be prospective. But the way it's drafted now, it's silent on that point. So how can you give us some guidance on, is this prospective, retrospective or what?
Under the law, a, whether it's a statute or a code change or a charter change, can only be retroactive if it expressly states that it is to apply retroactively if it is a substantive change, which this is. This is not a procedural change. So since this is a substantive change, if it is silent, it has to be prospective. It cannot be retroactive. So by removing the term "retroactive," that makes it prospective and we cannot argue that it's, whether it's prospective or retroactive, as a substantive change.
Okay, so help me understand this, John. So if somebody that's ran before was on council for eight years and they want to run again now, they're able to run again?
Correct. And going forward, they would be subject to the.
To the eight years from there.
So, but it would be from the start date of when this comes into effect.
Okay, okay.
Fine, yeah.
Okay, all right. Marnie, do we have any public comment?
Yes, Van Kadenhead.
Okay.
Van Kadenhead, I would just like to thank you all for allowing the people of Isle of Marauda the choice of how they want this to go down. And I think that all the discussions that we've had about this previously were good discussions. Where, you know, we got, we got a lot of the issues out of the way and thank you very much for having this and I urge you to vote for it. Thank you much.
Thank you, Van. Marnie, any other public comment?
No, sir.
Okay. Council, any further discussion here? Okay, all right, do I hear a motion?
I'll go it.
All right, so Henry made a motion to approve. Hear a second?
I'll second it.
All right, call the roll, please, Marnie.
Councilmember Henry Rosenthal.
Yes.
Councilmember Mark Gregg.
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolyn.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney.
Yes.
And Mayor Buddy Pender.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
All right, tab 16, John?
Sorry, tab 16 is also, is the last, there's one more ordinance, but this is the last one on second reading. It's an ordinance of Isle of Marauda, Village of Islands, Florida, providing for an increase in compensation for village council members, providing for referendum to be held with the regular village election on November 5th, 2024, providing for submission to the electors of a proposed amendment to the village charter pertaining to increased compensation for council members, providing for requisite ballot language, providing for separability, providing for inclusion in the charter slash conformity of amendment, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions and providing for an effective date. This is, this is coming back to you all with the change that was approved by the council at the last meeting that would increase the compensation to 1,500 per month. In addition, there was language that's added that would, that the council member compensation will be subject to an annual cost of living adjustment that's commensurate with any adjustment that's given to village staff during that same fiscal year. So that's, that's put in there for your consideration and for then the, if it, if it's approved by four, no less than four votes, it would go to the electorate for the electorate's consideration.
Okay, all right, thank you, John. Henry?
I think it's a mistake as far as the cost of living increase. I think it comple, it, it causes the 1,500 to not survive. So I feel we should take another look at the cost of living in that respect. I am opposed to that, but I am in agreement with the 1,500. I don't want to jeopardize the 1,500 with the cost of living. So that's where I am. Thank you.
Any other further questions from Council? Okay, public comment, Marnie?
Yes, Van Kadenhead.
Van Kadenhead, I'd like to fall in behind what Henry Rosenthal just said. I think that the difference between the 1,500 and the COLA, which was added at the last minute, you know, as a throw-in to the mix, I think it would endanger the vote on the 1,500. And I would just like to point out that, that the staff who gets the COLA are paid employees. You guys are elected officials. It's apples and oranges. So if we were to allow the same thing, the raises that happen for the staff, the paid staff, the employees, to apply to you, within four or five years, you guys would be making over $2,000 a month. You know, just given the increases that the staff has had over the last five years. So if we went five years into the future, without benefit of the charter, you would be able to make, you know, considerably more money. So I think the people of Isle of Marauda should be able to make that choice unencumbered by trying to, to figure out what the COLA might be in the future for future people. Whereas you can make another application in the future for $2,000 a month if you find that's not enough with the 1,500 and try it again at the next election. But, but to just capriciously arbitrarily add the COLA in on top of the $1,500 confuses the issue. And I don't think the comparison with apples and oranges is, I think, right on the button. And I don't think it's the same equation on both sides of that question. So I would urge you to strike the COLA and just leave the 1,500. And I follow behind what Mr. Rosenthal said and I firmly believe that that's the path you should follow. Thank you.
Thank you, Van. Any other public comment, Marnie?
No, sir.
Okay, Council, anything, we have anything else we'd like to discuss? Do I hear a motion or do we?
I'll make the motion. To accept, eliminate the COLA. He just asked for a motion, didn't he?
I asked for a motion, but we don't have a second.
The Councilman Rosenthal can make the motion and if there's a second, then we would have a vote on it. The motion, as I understand it, is a motion to approve the ordinance with a modification to remove the language dealing with the cost of living adjustment.
Well said.
Do I hear a second on that one? Okay, for fear, I mean, for, no follow-up with a second? Do I hear a motion to approve as is?
I'll move for approval as is.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I second it.
Okay, Marnie, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Mark Gregg.
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolyn. Councilmember Henry Rosenthal.
No.
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney.
Yes.
And Mayor Buddy Pender.
Yes.
That motion passes four to one.
All right, that was first reading, right, John?
That was second reading. So that, yeah, that one will, will, will be transmitted to the supervisory elections.
I'm sorry, I was looking at the wrong one. I was looking at tab 17.
Yeah, 17 is, is the last ordinance that we have and that one is first reading. It's an ordinance of Isle of Marauda, Village of Islands, Florida, amending the village code by amending Chapter 2, Administration, Article 2, Officers and Employees, Division 1, Generally, by creating Section 2-33, reimbursement of legal expense in defense of officials, providing for the reimbursement of defense of officials, definitions, requests and approval, authorization, reservation of rights and immunities, applicability, malicious, frivolous or groundless allegations, providing for separability, providing for inclusion in the code, providing for an effective date. This is a follow-up, or this was an ordinance that was requested to be brought back for the reimbursement of expenses related to a defense of certain matters. Currently, we have, we have the bulk of the county's ordinance. I say the bulk because we adopted a, the county, we adopted the county code when we became a village and it stays in effect unless there's a change that's made. They have a provision that allows for, or is the mandatory reimbursement related to the successful defense of a civil or criminal matter. Again, I said the bulk because there was one provision that was amended after we became, after we adopted that provision, so that one wouldn't apply here. Some of you, you all might be familiar with that because we dealt with that with former Councilman Webb's defense of a criminal matter. This one is, is more expansive than what the county has at the request of council. This, this deals with civil, criminal, ethics matters and administrative matters. It is still drafted for the successful defense of those that is laid out in the, in the proposed language. There's also a provision in there that discusses the, how the request for approval should take place with the timing, who it goes through, who makes the request, what happens if it's the manager that has to make the request. So that's dealt with, so we have a procedure to follow and, and we have a timeframe for it too, as well as certain standards for, that allow for the approval to make sure they're reasonable fees, not exorbitant fees, things like that. And so if you have any questions, I'm, I'm here to answer them. Again, this is first reading, so if this proceeds, if it's approved, it would need to come back again for second reading.
Okay, so John, how does that cover, like, like the county has Mark Herron on retainage for Form 6?
Yeah, that would, that's a different issue, which we did discuss at the last meeting and I did, I spoke with Mark Herron. He's been, he's actually in trial and he's been preparing for trial, but he is going to be getting us over a retainer agreement for, to retain him to help with the preparation of Form 6 for everyone who has to file a Form 6. So that's a different item that's not dealt with in here, but that will be dealt with and that will be coming back with a retainer agreement shortly. I talked to him again today, even though he was going into trial, he said he would get me something this week.
So just so the public understands, the reason I brought that up is that I talked to several of the county commission and they cannot file their form without getting the blessing of Mr. Herron in Tallahassee. So the county's retained him for that purpose. They have to, all of them have to present, so basically, that's what we, I think when we brought this up, the same thing, that we would follow what the county's doing so we could make sure we're, we're crossing, I mean, dotting our i's and crossing our t's on the Form 6.
Yep.
Okay, all right. So with that being said, public comment is now open, Marnie? Is there any public comment?
Van Kadenhead.
Last chance to dance. I don't want to beat a dead horse and I don't want to be redundant, but I must reiterate that the case that was mentioned by our council with David Webb was a violation of the sunshine law. It occurred right there and it occurred with photographic evidence by Sue Miller and I was willing to testify in front of whatever judge it came up in front of, but it never came up in front of a judge. Instead, Mr. Webb's attorney made sure that he didn't have to go to court and paid $250. Now, $250 to me is an admission of wrongdoing. There was wrongdoing done. He was not, it was not a successful defense. The statute that you want to have in. The, the statute that you want to have installed now says a successful defense. The defense was, was nonexistent. He never got in front of a judge. And, and the, the state attorney, I was very disappointed in the fact that he let that lay, because we had a definite violation of the sunshine law with Mr. Rosenthal and Mr. Webb right on that spot. And I saw it, Mrs. Miller saw it, and I got John quick over into the middle of it to make sure he stopped it. And so, it happened. There was no doubt about it happened. There was an investigation of it by the sheriff, by the sheriff's investigator. And it was, it was bought out with a $250 fine, or whatever, from, from Mr. Webb. Now, Mr. Webb's attorney charged Mr. Webb $13,000, or $12,000 and change, to defend him against that, and we paid it. Now, my, my position is, we never should have paid it, because he was guilty as the day is long. And, and anybody that says any different is calling me and Mrs. Miller a liar, because we saw it happen. And I'm, I'm really appalled that the state attorney allowed that to slide through, and I hope that this, this statute that you're trying to install, this ordinance, this, this guideline, is, is followed to the letter, and that there, if there is a question like this in the future, that is a successful defense, because what happened with Mr. Webb was not a successful defense for which the people of Alamo Rata paid nearly $13,000. Good evening.
Thank you, Van. Any other public comment? Marnie?
No, sir.
Okay.
And counsel, I should also, in terms of the, the applicability, I wasn't sure exactly how the, the dates you wanted it to start applying from, so I just put it, I just wanted to point it out, so you all can address it if you would like, that I drafted it so that the section applies to all actions and proceedings pending upon or instituted after the effective date. So, if it was pending at that time, or if it obviously instituted afterwards, it would apply. But it didn't, it doesn't deal with ones that have been instituted before. So, I want to point that out in case you all would like to deal with that, or not, not instituted, but dealt with, that were not pending prior to that. So, I didn't know how you wanted to handle that, so I just thought I would bring that to your attention as well.
Okay. Okay. Counsel, we all good? Any questions?
I just have one question. It's more of a grammatical kind of a question. On, I guess, would be the second page of the, the actual underlined part of the ordinance, and there's paragraph B as in boy, defense of officials. The second line, it makes reference to successfully defending any criminal, comma, civil, and ethics. I think there should be--
It's missing a comma. I see. Yeah. Thank you for pointing that. Yeah, it's missing, and I'll make sure to correct that scripter's error.
So, with that, I would move to approve it.
Do I hear a second?
Yeah, I will second that.
Okay. All right. Marnie, call the roll, please.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
Since some of this pertains to me at this particular time, if you have coverage, and it's a successful defense, you know, when you get coverage for your cars and automobiles and what have you, it's not dependent by the insurance company as to whether it's a successful defense or not. You're covered, no matter what happens. You're covered. I don't want to discuss where I am, but I think, in this particular case, someone from the public makes acquisitions against me, and all of a sudden, I've got a major, major problem. And it could happen to any one of you. Somebody stands up and makes some allocations, and next thing you know, you have to defend yourself. And I don't think that's right. If you have insurance to be covered, it should pertain to, no matter what the outcome is. I mean, in, in my particular case, I, I could spend a lot of money to make sure I have a successful defense. If that happens, then that little number is handled by the people of this city. I mean, I, I'm really taken back by the whole thing. I mean, I really am. And I feel with, if you approve this, I'm not covered.
That's true.
I'm not covered.
But can I, can I, can I ask?
I have to be successful in the defense. There's no guarantee that's going to happen, and that's what you're saying. It's the only way I'm covered is, is I have to be successful.
That makes sense.
And that just isn't right. That just isn't fair.
He is right.
Because this has gotten out of hand with people putting charges against people, and it's sort of not fair. It's really not fair.
Absolutely. So, if you approve this--
I agree with you.
You understand where I am and what I'm, what I'm talking about, and that's really unfair. It just is. Anybody can make an accusation about anybody here. Next thing you know, you have to get an attorney, and it's a major, major process. So, I'll leave it up to you to make up your minds, but I'm, I'm going to call on you to not approve this.
I agree with you, Henry.
Thank you.
I would like to say something. I, I have a tremendous amount of sympathy for what Henry is saying, and, and Henry's case is, is one worthy of that. But I, I have to counterbalance that with, you know, when we're long gone from here, you know, there could be all sorts of bad actors that get here and do all sorts of bad things, and they would, in essence, be encouraged to do that if they know, if they get hit with an ethics complaint or a lawsuit, even if they lose, they have their lawyer paid for by the village.
Why would you want to go through something like that, though? Who's going to want to do that?
You would be surprised.
I agree with Henry. I don't think it's fair. I think people drew first blood, and then it was retaliated back, and it's gotten out of hand.
It, it's a bad situation, and I agree with that, and I, and I have, I feel, I'm sorry for Henry, but, but, but how do we take care of Henry? But, you know, we're, we're in essence promoting, we're, we're almost sanctioning people to violate the, the law, ethics law, civil law, even a criminal law, if they know that while they're doing something here, that the people are going to pay for their lawyer. That's crazy.
Well, so can I ask a question? You know, in this scenario, because it sounds like there is some sympathy to your case, which, you know, I think we all have that, it doesn't, but I, I hear, what Mark's saying is, well, what if, what if someone is guilty, and, and again, let's just exclude you because this is a different case, what you're saying is, do anything you want up here, we're going to pay for your legal services, and if you're guilty, we'll stay, still pay for it. It's including, it's, it's encouraging bad behavior, but does, does our code provide an opportunity for someone who thinks, someone like a Henry in this case, to come and request partial payment or payment for legal services? Is that, is that an option for people?
It's an option. It's not in the code, but it is an option under Florida law.
Under Florida law, it's an option.
So, it would be, yeah, so, this provision is a, is a mandatory provision that requires the village to pay, just like it does for the, under, that we have under the county code. It's mandatory. If you prevail, you shall have your fees reimbursed. There is a provision under Florida law that I would encourage Councilmember Rosenthal to, if we, even, even if we don't enact anything, to, given the discussion that's going forward, that is a permissive reimbursement of legal fees, where the request is made to council who, for whatever the circumstances are, that I don't fall within the category, like what we have right now. I mean, an ethics complaint would not fall within the county's provision. So, you defend that, even if you're successful, you would not fall within the, it shall be reimbursed under what we're currently under, because that only applies to civil and criminal. So, you would make, there would be a request that was made, and, and I could draft the resolution that would approve the reimbursement of legal fees for the defense of whatever that matter is. So, while, if somebody does not fall within the provisions of this or the county code, it would not be mandatory, there still is an avenue that this council could make that person whole through, through general Florida law.
So, can you also speak to the provision in here that talks about the frivolous lawsuits?
Yeah, that was, so that was something that I, I had seen actually in a couple of other codes when I, when I looked into this, where it, it allows for the, the village to seek recovery of legal expenses if it, if it's a, if it's a frivolous, like, so, there, there's a, a statute in, first, when you're litigating, civil litigation called, statute section fifty-seven point one oh five, which is if, if somebody files something against you, and there's no merit to it, you should be entitled to get your attorney's fees back. This gives the village that option, if it wants. You don't have to, but it gives the village that option, that if somebody is targeting one or all of you with frivolous complaints, that, that you can go after them to seek, so that the village taxpayers don't have to, you know, be the only ones on the hook for paying for that. And it, I think it, it helps to discourage these kind of frivolous or politically motivated complaints that, that really, you know, that don't have a basis. I mean, if there's a basis for it, you know, that, that, this would not come into play, or if there's any, any sort of basis, but if it's frivolous or meritless, it would give the village the ability to, to go after them, and that would obviously be at the discretion of, of the village. You don't have to, but it gives the ability to do that.
Thanks.
All right, counsel, what do we want to do?
What, what can you, what, what language can you use for my benefit here? I don't understand.
Yeah, the state has--
He's saying it's already there.
Yeah.
Yeah, there is.
We, we already had public comment?
No, we didn't. Oh, did we? Oh, oh, sorry, forgot, so long ago.
Marnie, didn't I open public comment and close public comment?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
But, like--
That's, that's--
I'd let him speak.
Huh?
This is a new twist.
Okay. All right. Come on up. Come on.
So, I'm Dr. Harold Dalton. I'm also the president of the Madeira Bay Homeowners Association. And more than anything else here, I'm talking as a concerned citizen. If, why in the world would a citizen want to pay for a publicly elected official's legal defense if they're guilty? If somebody, okay, God forbid, none of you guys, but commits murder while on the job, why are the citizenry even remotely be considered on the hook for that? I'm sorry. If you're innocent, that's one thing, but if you're not, you know, we should not have to pay for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
He's got a good point, too. So, is there--
That's what I was trying to say.
That's what you're saying. If you're guilty--
Yeah, I get it.
Why would, why would anyone, I mean, if you're guilty, I'm sorry, you made a mistake.
I get it.
Right.
But how many people are in jail right now that are not guilty? Huh?
Well, that's--
Think about it.
How many are free who are?
Citizens aren't paying for it.
Okay. Thank you for your comments, sir.
But to be, this is what John just explained. By a state statute, you have the right, as a public official--
If I--
--to request, to come and request of your, your group here that payment, and then, and then this group has the opportunity to, to make some restitution.
But if I want to make this thing go away, because it's been offered to me, I can make it go away, but I have to admit guilt. I don't get a trial or anything unless I want to have that extra expense.
I'm not following you. I'm sorry.
You, Henry, you probably shouldn't talk about--
I probably shouldn't. All I'm saying is, I'm asking you to cover my particular instance where some, well, somebody out of the public just showed up, and--
We, we have the discretion to do that already. I think--
We have the discretion to do that now.
To do what?
To, to offer, to pay something on your behalf in, in the event this goes negative for you. We can consider that. That's what John was explaining, under state law.
Okay.
You know, you're a special circumstance. If we feel that you were wrongfully prosecuted, we can evaluate that. You can apply to us to do that. The law exists now where you can do that. But we, we're uncomfortable putting that in our code, because, you know, this will go on beyond us. And as the doctor was saying--
Do you want, do you want John to explain that again? What you just said?
Yeah, there's, so, there are two avenues for reimbursement for legal expenses as a defense, as an elected official. One is through a code provision, which we currently have under the county, and we're considering here today, which would be a mandatory reimbursement, that if you prevail, at least how we have it and how it's drafted here, unless it's amended, if you prevail, the village must reimburse your fees. Then there's a second avenue to seek reimbursement, which is a, a general Florida law allows for permissive, or is a, it's a permissive request. So, you can make the request and, of the council, and the council can consider the circumstances, and it, it has the discretion as to whether or not it would reimburse your fees, depending on the circumstances.
Even if I don't prevail?
Yeah, I mean, it depends on, like you said, if you're, if you were, you're not being prosecuted for murder, but if you're convicted of murder, I don't think that that one would, they would allow for permissive, but for, you know, it, it's not, it's not as strict as what we're talking about, as what the code provisions usually are, that you have to, you know, you have to absolutely prevail under all, all circumstances.
I could pay a fine, and I could admit to the allocations, and it all goes away. But under those circumstances--
Yeah, I'd have to talk to you more about your circumstances, which I don't want to do on the dais, but I believe, yes. But I could, I could, you and I can speak offline. This is, since this is just first reading, and then we can, we can speak before, between first and second reading, just to make sure that, yes, you would, depending on what your circumstances are, you would be able to seek the permissive reimbursement.
Do I understand that?
I would do that.
Yeah. This is first reading.
Right.
You got time to work out some--
Yeah, we can, we can talk about the exact specifics, so I can make sure that you would be eligible to apply under the permissive general Florida law.
Even if I called quits today, say, I'll pay you off and see you later, but I have to admit to it.
Yeah, and again, like, I don't, I don't want to have, this is, you know, your personal discussions, and I know, I, I'm sure you're represented by council, and I don't want to get into attorney-client communications, obviously, between you all, and certainly not here on the dais with the public involved.
There is an, there is an avenue available to the council to make me whole.
Yes, and I will, when you, when sometime between today and second reading, you and I will get together to talk about the specific facts to make sure that you're eligible under that avenue. Yes.
With that, I say thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, Henry. All right, so, there was a motion, and there was a second, correct, on the floor?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Mark Gregg?
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolen?
Yes.
Councilmember Henry Rosenthal?
I guess I say no. Or do I say, I mean--
That's your choice.
Yeah, and it's also just first reading, so this is--
I don't want to jeopardize my position. Maybe, maybe I should recuse myself.
But you're eligible to, to vote on it. All of you are. Again, this is just a vote to move this to second reading.
For the sake of simplicity, I'll say yes.
And Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney?
Yes.
And Mayor Buddy Pinder?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, that is, that's it. That was the last tab, right, other than after--
Look at the time.
--action report? And do I hear, is there anything else, Kimberly? Or John?
No, I think we're good.
Just, do I, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
All right.
We're doing it by 10 o'clock. Check it out. We beat the clock.
I'm trying.